We will now convene our regular city council study session for May the 16th. And again, I'll note that council members, Duff and Goforth, are out of town and unable to attend. Item one on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, May the 20th, meeting. So let's please go through that now. Mr. Brady, I know that there are some staff presentations relevant to the items on Monday's agenda, right?
That's correct, ma'am. We have several. Would you allow me to just kind of take one?
Yes, why don't we just?
So let's start with 5B. Chief Rankin, are you here?
Yeah.
I think this is important for the council to hear, just a brief presentation on what 5B represents.
Thank you, welcome, chief. I'm sorry, did you say 5E?
B, B and B.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. So this morning, I spent a couple of minutes talking about the East Valley CERT. As of June 2025, Arizona state law is going to require that officer-involved shootings are investigated by agencies other than the involved agency, which means by 2025, there's going to be three options in terms of any officer-involved shooting investigation that occurs. It will either be conducted by DPS on a statewide level, it will be conducted by a regional task force, or another agency as selected by the involved agency. So the Mesa Police Department, as well as other East Valley agencies, have come together over the last 18 months to develop a East Valley Regional Task Force. The teams have met in order to develop workflow and policy to ensure that there is consistency in the investigations involving officer-involved shootings. Those teams consist of the leadership group, which represents each one of those agencies, and the operations group, which represents the work group to ensure that the boots on the ground understand exactly what it is that the investigation will entail and ensure there is consistency, again, in those investigations. Although the law does not go into effect until June of 2025, on July 2024, we are going to kick it off, the East Valley CERT. So that will give us a year's worth of opportunities, if you will, to really kind of hone in what that looks like. And so by June of 2025, our team will be set and ready to answer any call that comes out within the East Valley. So what that looks like operationally is that the Mesa Police Department will be investigating officer-involved shootings in other East Valley agencies. So we will be solely responsible for their shootings. Other East Valley agencies will investigate ours, but because we're a larger city and a larger agency, that will be parsed out among those other agencies. So in the future, you'll see Scottsdale, or Tempe, or Chandler, within our jurisdiction, investigating officer-involved shootings. Now, there are a couple of other criteria. If there is another use of force other than the use of a firearm, where it results in significant injury or death, and it was intentional, then another agency would come in and conduct that investigation. And then the third criteria, if there is a use of force-related incident that the chief of police would like another agency to investigate, then the chief of police can make that request to the East Valley Critical Incident Response Team.
I thought it was just important for the council to understand what this is.
Ms. Spillsbury.
Do you create like a team that has people from each agency, or it's like one, like Scottsdale would just be doing that incident, and Tempe would just be doing that incident?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, great question. Ideally, what we wanted to do was have the teams homogeneous, so it would just be Scottsdale, and it would just be Chandler. But what we found over the last 18 months, as we put together the concept for the teams, is that it is a strain on some of the other agencies that don't have the appropriate staffing. So we've had to go to a hybrid model. So when we bring in a team, there is a good possibility that you'll have the lead agency being supported by other agencies. So if Scottsdale's the lead, they could have Tempe or Chandler being support in that role.
And I assume that each agency has their own way of reviewing incidents. So do you have protocol or procedures set up where you're all going to do it the same for each city?
Yes, so the Maricopa County Attorney's Office has general guidelines that they provide in terms of what they expect in terms of officer-involved shooting investigations. Those guidelines are used by each agency. Now, having said that, each agency does it a little bit differently. And so what we have done is we have tried to make it very consistent from one agency to the next. We have accounted for exceptions, and as part of the policy, there's an addendum sheet that provides for those exceptions. So you may have an agency that wants to do a blood draw, and another agency that wants to do a urinalysis. So we've allowed those agencies to continue doing what they're doing, because that's what their leadership wants. In order to overcome any of those challenges, we've also assigned a liaison officer to that group, and that liaison officer will basically be that conduit between the investigating agency and the agency being investigated.
So then obviously, they make some sort of report or findings at the end to see if there's anything that needed to be done differently, or changes, or something like that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So the operations committee will meet on a regular basis. The operations committee basically consists of either the commanders or the lieutenants over those homicide units. They will, whatever the, whether it's monthly or quarterly, when they meet, they will bring back the, any issues that they really encounter during those investigations, discuss what solutions are to overcome the challenges. And once they have a solution, they will present that to the leadership group. And the leadership group consists of investigations chiefs, such as myself, will look at the recommendations, and either approve, deny, or ask for additional modifications.
Okay, great.
So chief, thank you. I'm assuming you mentioned we're a large municipality, and heaven forbid that if we had two OIS incidents in our city, then we have the proper response to manage this from other agencies. Will we have that opportunity from other agencies? Like you said, if Scottsdale's the lead, we have one in this area of our city, then another one happens, how's that going to be managed?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the way that would be handled, and Lord willing, that's not going to be the case, and we won't have to go down that path, but the way it's going to be handled, we will reach out to DPS. Since they are statewide investigative agency, we'd rely on their team in order to do that second investigation.
Okay, thank you.
It seems like we're kind of dividing this into Mesa and everyone else. Is that fair?
Mayor, that is very fair.
Okay. And even though, I mean, I would assume some of the smaller East Valley departments might not have, as you say, perhaps some of the ballistics or to do an in-depth gunshot investigation, not just any police department is going to do as thorough a job, just because of resources. Is that fair to say?
Mayor, that is correct. So when we look at the East Valley agencies, we've assigned some of the East Valley agencies as primary agencies, and some of the agencies as secondary agencies. So we have Queen Creek, Apache Junction, we have Paradise Valley, who are involved in terms of assisting in the investigations. But those agencies would not take primary, because they are smaller agencies, they don't have the resources, and because they are smaller agencies, they don't have the same number of iterations for investigations. So we would rely on Scottsdale, Chandler, Tempe, and Gilbert to be those primary agencies to assist in those investigations.
That makes sense. And just out of curiosity, who's partnering with Phoenix? Is that going to be DPS? Because that would be a real task to be the agency that does these investigations for Phoenix.
Mayor, initially, Phoenix was going to be part of the East Valley Task Force, but to your point, it's such a heavy lift that ultimately, that wasn't to be. So whether or not they made a decision on how those investigations look, my, and this is just mere speculation on my part, that it would have to be DPS responsible for their investigations.
Yeah, that'd be a full-time.
West Valley couldn't.
No, West Valley would not be able to.
One last question. You know, in the East Valley, we have the best forensic lab in the East Valley in mitigating all this. So when this comes to the lab component, I mean, are we using our Mesa Lab Forensic Police Department to handle these type of incidents, or is it outsourced to another lab?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, our lab will be handling the forensics for the investigations.
The investigation part of it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was, appreciate knowing about that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Mayor. Next, we'd like to review item 5C.
5C.
Yeah, 5C. So this is a long time in coming, working on our agreement with Mesa Public Schools, so.
Good morning.
Welcome, Andrea.
So we have been working for, since the beginning of 2023, with Mesa Public Schools to update our cooperative use agreement. We had an agreement governing our partnership on pool sites since 1986. And in 2003, with a small update in 2017, we had our cooperative use agreement. So it was well overdue. We identified this during our master plan process in 2021, as needing to update the partnership that we have with the school district. So we spent about a year and a half going through discussions for the pools, the adaptive program, use of other school sites by the city, and use of city sites by the school district, and outlining what we need to do to capture that partnership in a way that doesn't generate additional costs for residents that are participating in each of our programs, since we all have the same constituents. So the agreement, and there's two agreements in there, the first one is cooperative use, the second one is for adaptive program. And for cooperative use, the update involves a change in how the utilities are covered at the pool sites. That's a big change in there. So the 1986 agreement, the schools in Arizona had a slightly different funding formula with the state boards, and they were able to cover utilities on their campuses. That funding possibility has gone away, and so the school district needs to make sure that the money they're expending is specific to the programs at their schools, the students that are in their programs. So starting July 1st, that agreement says that we'll take over all utility accounts for the pools, and then charge the school district for those uses. So that's AIA high school sports, swim, dive, some of them have water polo. It's also, so that's a flat fee that we agreed to. And then other uses, if the schools choose to do PE class sections in the pools, they would be charged for that. Any kind of school parties, any other teams that are not aquatics-based, AIA teams in the high schools, would be charged as well. So that's the big change. We'll take that on, and then the school district pays for those uses. We provide the lifeguards, we provide the heat going forward in the pools during the cooler months, and that allows the school district to stay within their funding formula with the state. At the same time, we're turning over all ballfield utilities that are on school campuses over to the schools. That's also been a partnership over the years. In 2017, the school district started exclusively programming those now, while turning the utilities over to go with that. So they're the ones charging the Little Leagues and the other community sports groups for those uses, and they'll be in charge of maintaining them going forward. We still have our ongoing partnership with Jefferson and Webster Recreation Centers, where those serve as the school gyms during school day, and the city programs them as rec centers after school and in summers. And then other, just outlining the general philosophy, is to charge direct costs to each other, and not anything above and beyond that. And so for the school district charging the city, that means they are able, based on their accounting system, to charge anytime we're using their facilities and they are not. Otherwise, when they're already, like if they already have a campus open for summer school, we can be in there in the gym using it, or if they have after-school programs, we can also be in there for our programs in the gyms. And then for our fee structure, we're taking our resident rate less 20%, so that we're trying to get at just the direct cost for having those facilities open for their uses. On the adaptive program, that's a continuation of the philosophy that it takes the school district and the city to work cooperatively, to provide a complete adaptive opportunity for physically challenged and cognitive challenged programs. And so we are not charging each other for those. School district could be in our facilities, we can be in their facilities, at no cost. So that's Camp Fiesta in the summer, that's Wiggles and Giggles program for toddlers, that's disabled sports happening on the school tracks, all of those types of opportunities without a charge. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's a summary of it.
There's a lot of work, so appreciate that you put this together.
Yeah, I started coming to the meetings here in 1996, and this was a problem then. And I think, so this is, I love seeing that we're, made progress and maybe come into some resolutions on these issues. And it makes sense to me that the pools really are our facilities, and they're just located at their campuses. And so the, taking over the financial responsibility for that, I get it, that makes sense. Similarly, the fields, we use their fields, but they're their fields. And so for them to schedule them, for them to be responsible for the maintenance, that makes perfect sense. So I'm glad. So one of the other areas of conflict I think we've had in the past is duplicating programs. For example, we both have seventh grade basketball programs, or something like that, and it seems like we were kind of competing, you know, to some extent on youth sports programs. Is that, I haven't, my kids are all past that stage now, so I haven't really focused on it, but does that continue to be an area of struggle, or have we resolved those things?
Mayor, the agreement says every year, we're going to work out what programs we're offering, and at which sites, and the school district will do the same. So within the past year, we've taken over their intramural basketball program completely across the city, and we're running those now, same way with volleyball. And then as far as summer camps, after-school programs, what this does is puts a philosophy in place and a process in place to coordinate, so that we're not stepping on each other's toes.
That's great. This obviously is Mesa Public Schools. Do we have similar challenges with Gilbert, and maybe more and more with Queen Creek, as for example, if we're successful in building a city pool at East Mark High School? But what's the situation with the other school districts?
So Gilbert Public Schools has an agreement with us that we do pay for using their, in most cases, it's using their campuses for summer camps. And so there's a fee structure in that agreement for that. There hasn't been areas of ambiguity in that relationship, and that's continuing to work that way. For Queen Creek, the pool will be our first interaction for partnership with them, and we've talked philosophically that it would follow this model with Mesa Public Schools. And if we end up with approval to proceed with that, we'll put that in an intergovernmental agreement as well.
Great. Thank you. I'm excited, I'm sure the school district's excited too, to make progress on this. Any questions, council?
Ladies first.
I was just going to say, it looks like on the report that the governing board of Mesa Public Schools already approved this.
I believe so, that's correct.
Councilmember Spillsbury, they approved the Cooperative Use IGA April 23rd, and they're scheduled at their next meeting to do consideration of the adaptive program.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Andrea. I know this is a cost savings for the schools. I see some of the money shifting from the school to our city for some of the aquatics programming, it looks like, and tapering it off. One question I had is on the ballfields. There's no appetite on the Mesa Schools Board to eliminate any ballfields, because softball, baseball fields are very valuable. And I know that, I was, back in my early years, I played like at Eisenhower Elementary School, and there's no ballfield there anymore. So are they going to take out any ballfields at all that you know of?
Councilmember Freeman, they, I believe the softball fields were also removed from Mesa High Campus last year. So they are still making changes and adjustments based on what they feel they need. It's based on what each campus layout requires more. So we're responding to public demand for field use. That's why we've built Fiesta and Red Mountain Expansion, and all of those facilities are based on addressing those needs. But the school district's primary focus is what they need on the campuses for school purposes.
Yeah, good. No, I just wondered about that, as I drove by Eisenhower. I don't know how long they've eliminated that field, but it was important. You know, just in neighborhoods and things, for people to use ballfields and have them scheduled, I thought was very important for our neighborhoods. But overall, I think, just listening to the mayor and yourselves, is this the best agreement that we can have today? I mean, do you feel comfortable with the agreement?
I do feel very comfortable with the agreement, and I'm pleased to put the philosophy behind it in that document with the updates, which helps everybody that comes in the future understand what we're trying to achieve.
Well, we're considering building two new pools in the future, so this is an important concept as well. And I'm assuming some of those aquatic programs will be on school property?
The East Mark.
Well, the Red Mountain won't be, but the other one, the East Mark, will be.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
In past years, we've talked about the lack of fields that we have, and that we have more requests for youth sports fields for practicing and games than we have fields to schedule. I know we've made progress, you know, with the new fields at Red Mountain and South Center, but, and I think I've been told that that's less, that we feel less of a deficit for fields. Is that true? And if it's not true, then is the school district fields maybe something, is that a part of the solution?
Mayor, the 2018 bond program really made great inroads in addressing the field shortage. We're not in as much of a deficit as we were. The school district, as a governing board policy, says campuses will be available if the neighborhoods want to be able to use them during non-school hours. And so they are still responsive to those requests. That's why they have booking of fields, they'll be responsible for keeping the lights in place going forward. So it does help address it, but it's also why we added so many fields over the past 10 years, even going back to the 2012 bond program.
Do we still have more requests from youth sports leagues and coaches to use fields than we have fields to provide?
Mayor, the requests that we aren't meeting are not as big, and they aren't youth sports. So adult-sized baseball fields, we're still in a deficit on that. But once Red Mountain opens for soccer fields and for rectangular field sports, that will make a huge difference. That's where we're running into problems now on capacity, being able to book them. The additional quad at Red Mountain is also helping with that, when we have teams overlapping each other at Quail Run. So there are still some places where the school fields make a difference, for sure, but we've really been able to address a lot of those needs.
When do the Red Mountain fields open?
It'll be late summer, this year, around August, right when it's still very hot.
We're letting the sod grow in.
We are letting the grass grow in the rest of the way, yes.
Okay. Well, that's exciting. I'm looking forward to, do you cut the grass instead of a ribbon? How do you, how do you open a field?
Bring out lawnmowers.
That would be a unique opportunity.
That's great, thank you. That, I think is a very positive step forward, so I know it reflects a lot of hard work, so thank you for that.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Francisco?
Yes, is, does this mean more programming on the city side? That's my first question. Then second question around scheduling. I know in the past, you know, I've heard from folks just trying to schedule, and kind of the confusion. I think this kind of clears up, you know, ballfields and lighting issues go to the school, and then pools, and the other parts of this agreement to us. But how's that scheduling process going to be communicated with our residents, as it was a concern in the past, as far as confusion of who they contact and what system they use?
Vice Mayor, Mayor, the scheduling, when it changed in 2017 to schedule school fields through the schools instead of through the city, we went through a lot of growing pains at that time, but I think the message is mostly out. It's been scheduling through the school district since 2017, and I think most folks are used to that by now. On the pool side, the programming opportunities are definitely expanded with this change, because the schools, up till this point, were able to use the pools during school hours without doing a reservation, so we weren't sure when they were in there and when they weren't. With this change in booking school use, along with any other use, we have greater flexibility of putting more programs in place in the pools, and do intend to do that over time. It's going to build gradually. Right now, we're doing year-round programming at Keno and Skyline only, and we will be able to look at other pool locations for fitness programs, lap swim, things like that, as the years continue.
And any other questions, Francisco?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summers, anything you'd like to add?
No, Mayor. Appreciate your question on extending this agreement as a template into Queen Creek for the potential for an aquatic center there, and that answered my question. I did have, pardon the background noise there, I did have a meeting with Dr. Perry Berry this past week, and they are interested in moving forward with a partnership for the pool. That's good news.
Okay. Well, yeah, I know that'll be on a future council agenda, and we'll look forward to having that conversation. Thank you. Any other questions, council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, next, we'd like to, Ian has a presentation on 5E, on the grant we received regarding electric mobility charging hub networks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Welcome in.
I'm Ian Lindson, I'm an assistant to the city manager. So item 5E is, it's to authorize the city manager to enter into the CFI grant agreement and to go ahead and accept funds. But we thought this would be a good opportunity to kind of review what this grant is, and what we plan to do with it, and what next steps look like. So just as a reminder, this was a federal opportunity, that it was the first opportunity, actually, for cities to directly apply for electric vehicle funding from the feds. We took advantage of it. It was roughly a $12 million grant that we were awarded, with a 20% local match, bringing the whole project cost to about $15 million. The project itself, at a very high level, is going to provide for at least, we have committed to 48 new charging ports across the city, at what we are calling, like eight or more charging hubs. The very cool thing about this grant, one of the things that I think was the most interesting to me, anyway, is the fact that the feds encouraged private sector participation in the grant. And so they said that grant recipients could go out, look for partnerships. If they did that, the private sector partner would become responsible for that local match. So at the end of the day, that means the city would be on the hook for none of this. To get to those 48 ports, we spent a lot of time looking at data, and we didn't just say, hey, we need some ports here, and we need some ports here. I think I've talked with you before about the fact that we don't want to, you know, throw 20 ports in an area where we think, you know, just across the street, there's going to be another 20 ports. That doesn't make a lot of sense. So we took a look at the data, and this is just a snapshot of some of the things we reviewed. So we have a lot of density in Mesa, especially right here in this part of town, a lot of multifamily units. That's one of the biggest hurdles in electric vehicle charging right now, is how do those folks charge? We looked at where people take trips, both leaving Mesa, coming into Mesa, and does it make sense in these transportation corridors for fast charging, similar to other initiatives that you're seeing across the country on the highways. Mesa was not, does not actually have a designated alternative fuel corridor in our city, so we've been ineligible for some of these highway grants that other cities across the country have gotten. So we said, hey, this might be a good opportunity to fill in those gaps. And then we also looked at something that we are calling a public fleet need, which is kind of like your mom and pop, or... is kind of like your mom and pop or your small businesses. Think of, I like to say, think of the plumber or the landscaper that maybe has a couple of vehicles and they want to dabble in electrifying those, but they've got nowhere to charge. So we kind of took a look at that as well. Bringing that all together, we came up with these three hub types: neighborhood charging, public fleet charging, and fast charging. Neighborhood is really in the dense part of towns. It's going to be probably slower charging. It's where folks will have an opportunity to spend some time. They can get out of their vehicles, they can do some shopping, or they live nearby. The public fleet charging is, just like I said, it would be located in parts of town where there are a lot of the small and medium businesses, so that it's convenient, hopefully, for those business owners to charge up their vehicles. Again, I use the example of, oh, and that'll be a mix of like Level 2 and then the fast charging. Think of your plumber who maybe gets a call in the middle of the night, but it's got an EV truck and it wasn't charged all the way. They need to juice up real quick, right? So they need some fast charging opportunities there. And then the fast charging hub, which would be located conceptually out east, kind of along the US 60, the 202, where people are really coming and going. Either they're coming back from work, they need to charge up before they get home, or vice versa, to do a quick charge before heading out. So the other thing we did with this grant is, instead of specifying exact locations where these hubs would go, we use the data to say, these are the general locations. So it's a little bit hard to see on this because the colors are similar, but the pinkish colors in kind of the, in and around the downtown area are those neighborhood hubs. The green is the public fleet, and then the more dark red are the fast charging. Again, these are general areas. When we eventually enter into an agreement with one or more private sector partners, we will work with them to identify the sites that make the most sense, and they ultimately will work out those arrangements. So with all of that, what next steps? Next steps are on Monday, you're going to consider the resolution. We will then work with the Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration to sign the grant agreement. And then we'll go right into our public solicitations to figure out these public-private partnerships. And at the moment, we envision probably two, at least two solicitations, both an RFI and eventually an RFP, and then we get to work. And as far as we know today, we need to obligate, it's kind of a quick timeframe, we need to obligate these funds by 2026 and expend them by 2031. But what, hopefully, what will end up happening, and now you can hold me to it because it's on video, but is the private sector kind of takes on the majority of this work, and the city maintains the monitoring role, because we do have to ensure that these ports stay true to the federal guidelines for at least five years. So we have to monitor that. So that's what I've got for you today. Happy to answer any questions.
Julie.
So on your numbers page, the local match, that's just what we would need? That's not what we have, because that's going out to the private sector? Is that what you were saying?
So we are, we have said, we are, City of Mesa is committed to providing that local match. In order to receive the grant, the grant recipients have to commit to providing a local match. However, that local match can be provided by the private sector if we were to enter into partnership with them.
But that's, that's the amount we'll need to?
Correct.
Get or match, okay.
Yep.
So, and then, so rough math, each of these charging ports is like $300,000. So is that infrastructure and everything? Because obviously, that's not how much each one would cost.
So Mayor and Councilmember Spilbury, that's a great question, and something I didn't put in here. Each of these stations, in addition to the ports, and something that actually we were told made our grant stand out, is we included some micro-mobility charging, so think e-scooters and e-bikes. We also included solar canopies, at least a few of these. There's some contingency baked in. So it's not, you can't really do that math right there to get that true, you know, number, but essentially, your math is correct. But what, what we intend to do through these solicitations is, again, say, we committed to doing the 48 ports, but could we go beyond that with the funds that we have, not adding on? If the private sector wanted to add on, they're more than welcome to. But with the funds we've got, what can we do?
Okay. But I mean, that, so I get that there's more than just what it says on this bullet point, but that large number, I guess I'm trying to get at, how much does it cost to put a port in?
So Mayor and Councilmember Spilbury, it's very port-specific, honestly. It can vary tremendously, because, again, like, it depends on if you're just doing a standalone charger that has all the wires ready, it's a Level 2. I mean, I've seen them commercially go for as low as $5,000, $10,000 in some cases, even lower than that, all the way up to, you're talking, you could be hundreds of thousands of dollars if you're talking about the fast charger, if you need the actual electrical equipment, you know, if things have been sized correctly. The other issue with, what we intend to do is, and we're working very closely with SRP, is find sites that have the adequate power already. Because while this grant does allow us to use funds for some electrical infrastructure, I always say, we can't build a substation with it. You know, there are limitations. So it definitely, it's very, very port-specific.
And then just remind me, because I'm not very, I think I've already asked this question in a previous presentation, but a charging port has multiple?
Mayor and Councilmember?
Chargers?
Another great question. I, yeah, I'm too in my head, I guess I use port a lot. Port is individual.
Oh, it is? That's the individual one, it's called a port.
So a charger could have multiple ports.
Okay.
And again, depending on how a charger is built, it might divvy up how the power is distributed to each port.
But so 48 means 48 people could be using that? That's individual, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I think we'll really know how successful this is going to be when we see what the responses are to the RFPs and RFQs, and if there is an over, if there's a good response, then the city's going to be out $0, right? Because they're all going to come in and the private partners will pony that up, and we might get a lot more than 48 ports, so. But I think this is a necessary step along that process, and I'm really excited and looking forward to seeing what the response is going to be from the potential partners on this. So thank you, Ian, for all the work you put in to get it to this point. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Ian. You know, I traveled last year, and I think I referred or talked about this before, I went to Buc-Ee's gas station on the I-10. And if anyone's been to Buc-Ee's, they're large, like 300 gas stations, and there were only about 12 EV charging ports. And so I thought, well, I-10 is a very significant travel sector, and not many were using the EV ports, just to set the stage. So I'm sure in your data and analysis, you've figured out, well, how could I include the private sector as well as, and I'm thinking the business sector as well, some of our larger employers in our city, which was our Banner Hospitals, Boeing, and others. I'm sure that as you identify the private sector, some of them may want to participate. But then some of our shopping centers, you know, people want to stop and shop and charge their vehicle and then get something and then go out. I share this story, a friend of mine, they bought a brand-new EV, and they were traveling to San Diego, and they just thought they could travel to San Diego. I think I've told you this story. I got to tell it again. So they're about 40 miles west of Yuma, and the light comes on and says, hey, you need to charge your vehicle. Well, where do I do that? Back in Yuma. So they had to drive 40 miles back and charge up their EV vehicle, and then they shot while it was charging. So I think strategically, we need to place charging ports in destinations, in destinations where people can shop and get with the private sector as well as the public sector as well, and our fleet, too. I mean, we're going to have a fleet. Does that encompass the Mesa fleet?
So Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, you've hit on a lot of great questions and things I didn't go into here, so, no, I should have mentioned, so this grant is specifically for the public. The ports must be publicly accessible 24/7. That is one of the main requirements. So it's not intended for our fleet. It's not to say our fleet couldn't use it, and we don't have any plans to necessarily, but, I mean, it has to be publicly available. So we have separate things going on, and you've heard a lot from Laura Heineman and others about the fleet side. But, but to your point about the partnerships, again, that's exactly what we're looking to do, and they're, I mean, everybody under the sun who has anything to do with charging is reaching out to us right now, and they want to know kind of what the plans are and how we intend to move forward. And it would be great if a shopping center or a gas station would be interested. In fact, when you look at a lot of the state DOTs across the country and the funding they've received, they are partnering in large part with gas stations to put these in, because that's where facilities are, that's where power happens to be, and it's a place for folks to stop and spend some time.
Well, I think the basic foundation is, do you have the power to support these stations? And that's what we have to look at. And so the power may not be available in certain areas, so that has to be analyzed by whoever the power provider is.
Absolutely.
I guess that's it, thank you.
Francisco.
Yeah, my question was going on the cost per the station. I know, Ian, you mentioned the, depends on the strategy that we're using, but also the power, right? So I'm just curious on the, the, the suit-up chargers versus the neighborhood ones, you know, sometimes those neighborhood ones do take a long time. I know ideally, it's for people that live around there, but I think also, you know, folks want a quick charge, and so, you know, there's just a strategy in the cost, right? If it's cost-prohibited to put much faster chargers everywhere rather than a mix of everything, it's slower chargers and fast chargers and medium chargers. So I just, just curious on the, on the cost analysis, if we are looking at where power is, it kind of eliminates some of that heavy cost burden, but I'm wondering on the terminal cost of just making sure that we have, you know, availability of a quick charging station, because I think that goes to the anxiety of people still feeling, you know, do I have to wait like 45 minutes to an hour, and I can only be at a gas station or, you know, local area for 20 minutes or 15 minutes, right? So the equity of making sure we have enough of stuff out there for people that want a quick charge. And so just, just thinking about those dynamics as we move forward.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, absolutely, a lot of great points and things, you know, for me, anyway, everything is still on the table. We definitely have a guide here, we've got a plan, we are committed to doing some things, but there is flexibility here where we can make sure we do the best things. I mean, that's, that's really my intent. And so if, if it makes sense to have fast charging, we could do it within the budget, within those neighborhood hubs, for example, because I'm with you, most people don't want to spend three, four hours plugged in if they don't have the time. It just so happens, though, in West Mesa, we have the highest density of fast chargers right now in the, in the private sector. So that's all stuff that we're gonna, we'll look at, and, but, but your points are very well-taken.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions on this? Great, thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady, any other staff presentations for Monday?
Oh, yes. So 5M is on the council agenda, but it's also part of the study session, so we'll hear that here in a second when we get to the specific study session items. But I believe Councilmember Freeman would have requested a brief presentation on 7B. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are we ready for that now?
Yeah.
B, yeah, the central Mesa reuse pipeline.
Yes, thank you for asking this question, Mr. Freeman.
I just asked for some clarification and overview because it's in Districts 1 and 2, and just let the public know that we are working hard on getting a resilient water supply, and this pipeline is part of it, and it's going to, excuse me, cost monies, and regardless of that, how it's going to impact our city in the future.
So, good morning, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. I just put up a graphic on the overall project. The overall project is to take reclaimed water from our Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, thank you for coming, helping me out, down to a point where we have existing reclaimed water piping that currently goes to the Gila River Indian Community, which is at Wrecker south of baseline at the bottom of the map. The project is to install 10 and 1/2 miles of 36-inch line. To get the 36-inch line in the ground, we have to move about 3 and 1/2 miles of aged 16-inch pipeline. We started the project about eight to nine months ago. We've completed, what you can see on the picture, even though it may be a little small, is the green line just north of Main down to Southern that's moving the 16-inch out of the way. And we started just this last week, and we're all so excited. I thought we were going to have a little party the day we saw it happening. The 36-inch is going in the ground, starting at Southern right now and going north. We'll be moving the 16-inch crew up to Val Vista probably next week. We've got a 400 pair of CenturyLink line between McEllops and McClellan that Lumen needs to clear before we can get in there, but hopefully, next week is when we're planning. There are 21 tunnels under intersections on the project. We've completed three of them. One is in Gilbert at Houston and Higley, one of them is Southern in Greenfield, one of them is Main in Greenfield. And we started this last week on the bigger tunnel under the AUS 60 freeway. We're about 50 feet into that right now. So the work is coming along. Greenfield has been more than a bit of a challenge. It is a very mature arterial street with a lot in it and a lot of undocumented stuff in it, too. So we have cleared the 16-inch line now, the south half, it is active. I think we have one more tie over at Broadway. The project altogether includes six contracts for the pipeline, three for the treatment plants, started the pre-purchase and the equipment for the treatment plants. The project is intended to be completed at the end of 2025, and Chris can give you more specifics on the water and what we plan to do with it.
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. So item 7B is about, it's a zoning item about the property for the influence, or the intermediate pump station. So this is primarily a pipeline project, but we do need a pump station and some storage at that location to make the hydraulics work, because we're using all existing pumps, we're using, in particular, we're using the existing pumps at the Northwest Reclamation Plant. And to be able to keep that whole pump station intact and in operation to make the hydraulics work, we needed that site at Thomas and Val Vista, so that's item 7B. Beth has done a good job breaking down all the elements. There's nine different GMPs. We're almost at the end of the road with the GMPs. The work has been underway for several months, and we were delighted to finally see the flatbed trucks bring out large 36-inch pipe, and that's going in the ground. That's what's actually going to carry the recycled water, because that's, as a reminder, that's what this project is. It's a recycled water project to deliver recycled water from the Northwest Reclamation Plant to the Gila River Indian Community to really maximize the benefits of that exchange agreement we have with them, because every drop of water that's, the recycled water that we create and send to them, they use on agriculture, and then we get in exchange very beneficial, high-priority CAP rates that are $200 an acre foot cheaper than what we pay for our normal CAP water. So it's going to be about 7,000 acre feet that we're going to get every year, once this project is done, and that's where we're already giving them, about 7,000 acre feet from the other two treatment plants. So we're going to double while we're sending them. So it's going to be every year going forward, once the project is done, operationally, we're going to save between $1.5 and $2 million every year. We're going to reduce our O&amp;M budget because of the cheaper water. So we're excited that the bigger pipe, the recycled water pipe, is being put in the ground, and we're on our way, hopefully, to be done at the end of next year.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, on June 3, you'll see another item from us, which will be an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Gilbert. The pipeline does cross into Gilbert and connect into a pipeline in Gilbert, and we just are entering into an agreement to allow us to do maintenance on the line, to be able to drain it, to test it, to access the line. So you'll be seeing that on June 3.
Thank you. You know, I think about the foresight in our community, sorry, city management, because if you think about extending the water line from the Northwest Treatment Plant just to the Gruspe and to this area along the freeway corridor, I mean, that was planning, that was done, how many years ago?
Like, in the early 2000s.
Yeah, 20 years ago.
About a quarter century.
And now, and now we're kind of completing the dot from that area up to Gilbert and to the, deliver that water to the Grick. And I look at the pump stations, you're pumping uphill all the time because elevation changed from the Northwest Plant to Val Vista, and then from Val Vista up the hill and sending that water to connectivity for the plant. But I think this is great, and, well, there actually is an elevation difference of 23 and 1/2 feet.
Yes.
So anyway, thank you. I just thought it'd be important just to revisit this, uh, part of what we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brady, any other?
So Mayor, we do have presentations on items eleven and twelve, but they're part of the study session, so.
Okay.
But that as far as, uh, any other presentations on the, on the agenda that, that, that we've completed those, so thank you.
Sounds good. Council, do you?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Is it or no? Oh, no, twelve A, I'm sorry, let's go to twelve A, I apologize.
Okay. Twelve A is the, the general plan?
Yeah, let's just, there's just a slight tweak of the general plan requested by one of the council members. Um, we just wanted to highlight that before we post that for your approval. So go ahead, Jeff, sorry, I apologize.
No, no problem, thank you. Mayor, Council, good to be with you this morning. I'm gonna bring up a slide real quick. Um, the reason we are here today is because we released the general plan for the review of the public on May second and since that time, we've had um, three minor changes we wanted to bring to you, uh, just so you're aware before you consider action next Monday. Uh, the first is at the northeast corner of Higley and Thomas Road. Uh, this particular site was originally, the land use was industrial and industrial does allow, uh, just to consider to be compatible, a heavy industrial zoning. You will see to the right of the area, that's that box, um, which is the site, that there is the reserve at Red Rocks, that's a single-family residential. And so even though there's, um, I want to reiterate to you, the general plan does not change zoning, does not affect it, but if, if there was a potential user who wanted to come in, heavy industrial under that particular land use would be considered compatible and that would not be a very good neighbor to the, the residential to the east. So the proposed change is to change the site from industrial to local employment center. Local employment center does allow for light industrial, which is what's um, the most common use currently there, as well as for medical office, um, retail, a few other uses. So um, that would be a, a more compatible neighbor.
Was there any others or is that?
Yes, I can pause there or I can continue on the others.
Why don't you get to the other two real quick?
Okay, so the other two, um, so the Mesa Grande Cultural Park is referenced in the general plan as well as the appendix. Um, this site, we've been working staff with our tribal partners for some time to devise a new name for this site that is more culturally appropriate and we've been told that our partners have selected a new name and we would really like that to be included within the general plan for the next ten years. So I, I promise not to jump the gun and to spoil the surprise, that announcement is coming very soon, but we, we do as staff intend to have the new name included both in the appendix and the general plan for consideration next Monday.
We're not gonna make you say it.
I, I couldn't pronounce it even if I wanted to.
But in recognition that they've come to us last week, couple of weeks ago with that, we, we want to include that in the general plan, so.
Great, and any other changes?
Yes, Mayor, one, one other change. The other change, um, so this is just correcting an omission. Uh, you'll recall back in April on the twenty-second and twenty-fourth, we had public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Board. During those discussions with the Planning and Zoning Board, they uh, came and said, you know, we, we heard from the public that we want to have more things to do, more active uses in the city. And so they recommended that we change, we add um, to the local employment center land use, that we add retail as a primary land use. And so we, we agreed to do that. When we went in to make the change, um, we accidentally put a, a clear dot instead of a solid dot, so that means that it's a supporting land use instead of a principal land use. And so we would like to um, make that change, make that a principal land use, retail a principal land use within um, local employment center so that we can accurately reflect the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Got it. So when you go out for public comment on the general plan, occasionally people will comment and uh, and we need to tweak the plan and incorporate those suggestions to it, so I, this, to me, it makes a lot of sense and I think these are all, all three good, uh, good additions and improvements to the general plan.
Yes, and, and the council on Monday will be asked to um, conduct the public hearing and then um, take the action to put it on the agenda. We still have a lot of work to do on communicating what the general plan is. Um, despite all the community engagement, we are still finding that a lot of our residents don't understand what it is and, but once they're explained to them about why we have to do it and what it's not and what it is, it, it gets there. So we still have a lot of work to do, so these changes are important, but there's still a lot of work to do for us to get, hopefully have this be successful in the upcoming election, so.
On Tuesday night, someone just said to me, I never heard there were any public meetings, which blew my mind.
I know.
Because I just, I thought it was a little bit overboard. Like, okay, we get it, we're doing the general plan again. Like, it was a lot in every single district, so to hear
Yeah.
Someone after the fact say they never heard of anything, like, it's just so hard to get it out to everyone.
Other polling and surveying, we're finding that. But once they understand, or at least explain to them, they're, they get it and they're on board. So we just have some work to do. This, these changes are important, but I, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we still have a lot of work to do to communicate what's going on.
But not to the point where we're gonna keep making changes.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, once we do this, you'll approve it on
We're approving it and that's done.
Put on the agenda, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is after Monday
To get them to vote still.
We still have a lot of education to do about what it is. That's, that's my point, so.
So it, it'll be baked on Monday?
Yes.
And then we have to go out and proselyte about it?
We just, we have to, you can proselyte, we'll educate.
Yeah, right. Right, well, we'll do the same thing. Well, nothing we say is gonna be overreaching it all.
Yeah, no, we just want to be very clear about what it is. And, and I think we've come up with some, um, we've tested some phrases, some key words that really do help people understand what it really is or that it's not changing the zoning to their property. I mean, that's a big deal too, so, but we can share that with you uh, in the future. We're working on our publicity pamphlet and that will try to address those issues.
So these three changes, were they gonna be updated into what's available online so the people will be able to see that?
Yes, and it will be there for you to, what you will be approving on Monday.
Okay.
Well, before we do that, I had a neighborhood reach out to me over the weekend about the place type and also the growth strategy. So it's probably best for me to have you contact them and discuss this further because there's just a small sliver that the neighborhood is, in my district is concerned about from, I think it's indicated as, uh, it's a purple area or is that brown? But is that okay, Jeff, if I have you contact them or vice versa?
No, it might not be.
I mean, we, they, they can, but I'll, obviously Monday night, the intent is to approve the general plan and it's done. And so um, Jeff can contact them, um, but you know, unless council wants to look at it Monday night, we would, we would probably end up continuing it Monday night to the next council meeting to make that, to make that change. So we, we can consider that.
Okay.
But June third is
June third is the true deadline.
But we got a lot on June third and we're starting as many, this idea of we're gonna start losing councilmembers and not having full forums and so we, I think we need to try to get it done Monday.
Okay, but we need to have a conversation.
No, no, I agree with that. I'm just saying, listen, we need, there's urgency to get it done before Monday.
No, I, I get that.
I do feel like though, is with a hundred and forty square miles, like you could nitpick at this thing for months and years.
And none of this changes their zoning, none of this changes, it's a guideline.
I, I don't, I wouldn't want to open it up to one neighborhood to get to pick something this late or if we're gonna be like, I don't know. I, I guess it depends on what it is.
Let's look at the materiality of it, but I think part of the conversation is just assuring people, this is not gonna change their life. Uh, we will, this is just providing, you know, opportunities, it's guidance and direction.
Well, I think part of it is having the conversation on it so that they understand as a neighborhood
Less than saying, yeah.
And, and you know, in spite of our going out in all the districts, I mean, it, it was a really light turnout. You know, we've got a, I mean, it, it's kind of frustrating in a, in a way that not many people showed up to our, our general plan updates and meetings. Those who did, great, thank you.
Yep.
But now I have a neighborhood reaching out, they don't know the timelines, they just said, can you help me understand it?
Yeah.
Which we can do.
We can do that.
As whether we consider a continuation or whatever, I, I get that, but we may not have to.
Okay.
And, and even after you approve it Monday, right? There's always after, after council approves, the general plan, it goes to the voters, there's always sort of that first period after it's voted on and assuming it's approved, that there can be minor general plan amendments.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the little, the little changes.
We do.
And I think also it's important to, something that Councilmember Spillsberry said is, it doesn't change the existing zoning. And so we also need to educate people about that, so that's important. I, I, one other thing is this, because this is, this is the resolution, putting it on for the ballot, so the, the language is there also, so I just want to point that out because this is gonna, we're gonna have this conversation on the permanent base adjustment here, I think, right after this. So, so many times people say, well, what, what's it gonna look like on the ballot? So if you go to this resolution to the very end in the tagline, there's actually, that's the phrase, you'll see what the question will look like on the ballot. Now, sometimes the county um, requires us to remove a few words to shorten a question or something of that nature, so it can be, sometimes it's the county requires us to tweak it. But if you're curious as to what the question is going to look like, if you look at the tagline at the end of the resolution, that's where it is. And then you'll see we've added what I'll call a, a sentence after the word yes and no, explanatory of what the yes and no vote is. We're hopeful that the county will place those explanatory sentences there, um, but that's ultimately, the, the county could also require us to just simply put the words yes and no to shorten the ballot. So I just want to manage expectations as to what the ballot's gonna look like, um, but if you're curious what the ballot's question is, is intended to look like, um, look at the very end of the resolution and the tagline.
And we're gonna go through that with all of the four questions that are coming forward.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Council, any more questions on Monday night's agenda? Okay, hearing, Mr., well, Mr. Brady, no additional staff presentations on Monday?
Uh, no, the, we are gonna, the study session includes
We'll get into it during our next agenda, right? All right, thank you then. Uh, moving on, item two A for our study session agenda is a presentation on a proposed adjustment to the city's expenditure base limit, commonly referred to as a permanent base adjustment. Brian, good to have you back.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, long time, no see. Only been a couple of weeks, but yes, this item I will be presenting on, the permanent base adjustment, is on the council's agenda for Monday night for consideration. It is five M. So to kind of go through um, the permanent base adjustment, the Arizona Constitution uh, requires an adoption of a balanced budget, so what that is, is basically the estimated resources and revenues must equal the appropriated expenditures. However, forty-five, just about forty-five years ago, the state imposed an expenditure limitation for all cities and towns, so back in seventy-nine, eighty. And what it did is, it also adjusts for population growth and inflation. This allows for local election, but it also allows for local election approval for expenditure limitations and that's what we'll kind of go through. As we know, uh, currently, the, the city is under home rule, which is one of the expenditure limitations. So the formula that they came up with back forty-five years ago was uh, calculating what the revenue collections were of seventy-nine, eighty, or what the expenditures were, but then also multiplying it by population growth and inflation and that's what the expenditure limitation uh, is for the cities and towns. So as I mentioned, a couple of types of expenditure limitations. Currently, the uh, city is under home rule, which allows to maintain local control of annual budget amount and determine the necessary expenditures, which is effective for four years. This is where we, uh, the city municipalities go out every four years and get voter approval uh, to be able to do home rule. The other one, which is I am presenting on today, is the permanent base adjustment to the expenditure base. So what this basically does is it goes out for voter approval for a certain amount and then it adjusts that expenditure base that was uh, calculated in nineteen seventy-nine, eighty. And then there is also a one-time uh, override if municipalities need for one fiscal year. And just kind of let you know, the home rule, there's about forty cities and towns that are under home rule right now and forty-three cities and towns that are doing permanent base adjustments. So there are a few more cities and towns that are moving away from home rule and going to the permanent base adjustment.
They're currently doing permanent base or they're turning to vote for permanent base?
So no, there are forty-three currently doing permanent base adjustment.
Currently, do you know how many are trying to do that with the election?
I do, I do not. I know we are, I know one other city that is redoing their permanent base adjustment, so they can, if they bump up to that expenditure limitation, a municipality can go out to the voters to increase that base again.
Okay.
So there is opportunity for that.
That's what you mean by redoing it?
Yes.
It's for a specific period of time, so.
So just to beat a dead horse, since nineteen seventy-nine, there've been forty-three cities that have said, no, we don't want to go with that number, we want to goose it, right?
We want to adjust it.
Mayor, yes, they, they wanted to adjust it up because they saw that the, the base that was calculated in seventy-nine, eighty wasn't good enough, so they went out to the voters saying, hey, our population has grown more than what it says, our inflation has grown more, so we need a, an increase to our expenditure.
So this is not an unusual thing for cities to do.
This is not.
So that's part of our messaging, I think.
No, and I think that's what's, and that messaging does work. I think the home rule just essentially gives you a four-year window
Yeah.
For that adjustment, that alternative, whereas the permanent base adjustment, well, it's the word permanent, we're gonna present to you a thirty-year window, right? So I guess versus four, that sounds permanent, but the idea is you can either do this every four years, which is what we've been doing for forty years or whatever.
Since two thousand.
Two thousand. Or we can say, listen, let's give us a better, instead of having elections every four years, let's establish an adjustment that'll get us for thirty years and that's what we're gonna be presenting.
So when you, when you switch to permanent, is that always thirty years or do you pick how many years that's gonna be?
We consider twenty, we consider thirty, we looked at those options.
And so out of the forty-three cities, what
Oh, I don't know.
What would be an average of what they have?
That, it, it all depends, you, you really couldn't, I would have to go back and see kind of what they're estimated, what they were estimating. They're hoping it to be permanent. Uh, I know a few cities that have done it in the nineties that have not happened to go back out uh, to adjust it.
Oh.
However, for instance, like the city of Scottsdale, they did one in two thousand and six, however, because of growth and things like that, they're having to go out again. So it's really estimating what your growth of that city is compared to what your expenditure limitation would be to see, okay, what, how many years are we estimating that we can meet that expenditure and stay under that expenditure limitation? Some may go out ten, twenty, thirty, forty and try to go out fifty years, things like that. So we thought the, the thirty years was a good uh, point, starting point to do a permanent base adjustment for the city.
And so do you, um, so you could obviously, if in ten years, we realize we need to go up, we can, but at thirty years, we have to or we could just keep going if it was?
So Mayor and Council, maybe I can provide context.
Yeah, thanks, I'm just trying to understand this better.
Is it permanent or is it thirty years?
Yeah.
So it's, it's a number change. If you go back to the calculation, it, it's, it's a, an increase by a specific amount. And so in this case, it's a hundred and forty-eight million dollars. And so um, it, it, for many people, that doesn't, it doesn't provide much context. Um, and so the, the cities are estimating how long they think that that will last. And so we, we have provided that to the public. In other words, we've actually, and you'll see in the question, we actually say, it's estimated for thirty years. It's an estimate and we wanted the public to be, we wanted to be transparent and tell them what that estimate was gonna be. So it, it could be ten years, it could be fifty years.
But this is
The years is, that's just an estimate. The permanent change is to the base number, the one forty-eight. We're just, we're providing more information by saying that that, that one forty-eight is, is estimated to provide uh, an expenditure limit for, for the next thirty years.
But let's be clear, we're not creating that title, permanent base, permanent adjustment to expenditure base. That's just the way it's referred to in our options, right? We're not using that as, trying to promote and say it's permanent, but really it's only thirty years. It's just that we either choose home rule or we use, which this essentially says, the tagline for that was, the council, let the council be, have the discretion to set its budget every year. Constitutionally, it still has to have a balanced budget, but the council will establish the limits for the next four years and that's how we've sold it. Let local control, don't let legislation from nineteen seventy-nine control how we do our business. And that's been successful. But instead of going every four years, the other option in the law is called permanent adjustment to expenditure base. And the way they had it calculated is we had to take, okay, where are we today? How much will we need to add? And we looked at options and we said, let's look at the, the thirty-year option requires a hundred and forty-eight million dollar, estimating, that's what it will be based on be based on our projections of growth and what we currently provide today.
And the, one of the reasons then is just to not have to do an election and spend the money on an election every four years.
Right.
To try to convince people to do something that's really confusing.
That's why we're choosing to do it today, or, sorry, in November, is because we, two years ago, we were received approval for home rule for the next four years.
Okay.
So the idea is, well, let's go, do it in the-
Middle.
Middle, and if that's successful, then we're good for thirty years. If not, we come back in two years and do home rule. But, but what we can tell you is that, based on some of the feedback we're getting, this idea that recognizing that the city hasn't adjusted its base, or been able to since seventy-nine, eighty, and this is a thirty-year adjustment, seems to resonate well, just like home rule has resonated well.
So it's, again, it's just gonna require education-
Exactly.
-to try to help people understand what we're doing.
And that's what, Mayor, if I could, the, that top number there, that's on the equation that's in front of you, that's what's being permanently adjusted?
The seventy-nine, eighty revenues collection number.
Well, you mean adj, permanently adjusted for thirty years?
No, it's permanently adjusted. The thirty years is an estimate for how long they believe that that, that adjustment will, will be effective to allow the city to expend its resources that it has.
So in the thirty-first year, we don't revert back to the seventy-nine number? We, we maintain that number?
Correct.
And, and if you needed to adjust again in thirty years, you start at that number, right?
But if you don't do anything, you're, you're just, you stick with that number. You don't go, you don't revert back. It is permanent.
It is a permanent change.
The base gets adjusted, just like the seventy-nine, eighties has been permanent for forty-
Yeah.
Whatever, forty-five years.
Well, that, that's good, so we're not creating a cliff for thirty years from now.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Yeah.
I had a, a question, is the constitutional spending limit still apply to this permanent base adjustment?
The, I would have to-
What do you mean by that?
Yeah.
We have to have a balanced budget.
Yeah, balanced budget based on the constitutional spending limit.
I don't know what that last part of that phrase means. The limit is we can't spend more than the resources we have in any one year.
Well, people ask the question, do we have a constitutional spending limit? Well, we do in some of our designation, Candace is, is shaking her hair, yes.
Can't do deficit spending.
But, yeah, we're not gonna do deficit spending, is what I'm saying.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's why it has to be a balanced budget.
Yes, we could only, per the constitution, we, the city can only spend the resources that we have.
Correct.
So that is basically, the constitutional limit is, the resources we have, that's all we can spend.
That's why the, all, these are alternatives to that limit, that's why home rule gives us the alternative to that constit, that seventy-nine, eighty limitation. And so what we're hoping to do though is create another, actually adjust the base.
Yes.
At, for, right now, all we're asking for, every four years is, as I understand, is just a, an exception to what that is. Now we're actually gonna go in and permanently, we won't talk about seventy-nine, eighty anymore, if that's a pass, because now we'll have the twenty-four, twenty-five, it will become the new base.
Okay. So-
How'd you ask your question?
Going, no, it's-
That's good, that's a good question.
Good questions, yes. So just to give you kind of what, a little timeline too, and what this seventy-nine, eighty does not take into consideration, one of the big ones is on this slide, is any revenues that the city receives above and beyond from seventy-nine, eighty would not be part of the consideration for that. So for instance, if we go to the next one, what it doesn't take into consideration is the public safety sales tax, the quality of life, the local streets, and also the general fund sales tax. So to give a little history, and I think the mayor was on council back then, is back in nineteen-ninety-eight, we did the quality of life, so when we did that, that's when council decided to do the home rule in two thousand, because that increased in revenues, we would have been over our expenditure limit. So the city decided to do the home rule, and then so we can be able to spend that extra revenue, and that's kind of what the public safety sales tax, the local streets, and the general fund also within that. So we did the, the local streets and the general fund was in two thousand six, and then also the quality of life was in twenty-eighteen, so doing home rule helped us be able to spend the revenues that we were able to get.
Even though all of these were voter approved, without the alternative to that base, we, we could have, we would be collecting it, but we couldn't spend it.
So the impact of not doing either home rule or permanent base, the city for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four would need to reduce the budget by one point, one billion dollars, because there are expenditures that are not subject to the limitation, a few of those, but a, a lot of our expenditures are subject to the limitation. So if we didn't have it and we were reverted back to that seventy-nine, eighty calculation, we, our budget would have been reduced by one point, one billion. And kind of to get it out there too, is what the expenditure limitation alternatives, it's not a tax increase, it's just increasing the limit of that seventy-nine, eighty base amount. It establishes a new, a new expenditure limit for the city. It does not, do not allow the city to exceed adopted budget. The city still must adopt a balanced budget, so your resources and revenues must equal your expenditures. And then it also allows the city to maintain an existing and plan for future services. So we know what the number is going to be, so that helps us plan out for any future years.
So it does not do anything to allow us to incur more debt, to have a greater deficit, because I can hear that rhetoric now? It doesn't do any of that. It's, still requires us to have a balanced budget, it just doesn't, it allows us to, it's just where the choice of alternatives to adjusting from that seventy-nine, eighty limitation, it gives us a different path to make that adjustment.
So the slide before, when it says that if this wasn't approved, this is saying if home rule wasn't in place-
Right.
-or the permanent-
Yeah, so if, if we, it doesn't get approved this November, the city will have to come back in two years for home rule. If that home rule isn't approved, we face this every four years.
Okay, yes.
This isn't changing, then that would be the impact of not getting it.
But, so this specific bullet is just a example of-
Right.
This year's budget would be-
It's not just, it's not just on permanent base. A permanent base, instead of get approved, we'll have to do home rule in two years.
Okay, so, so if home rule hadn't been approved, yeah, okay, just want to make sure I understood that.
So just to give you a little timeline of, with the currents, the, the city's current alternative, which is home rule, as I mentioned, voters approved it in two thousand, but then every four years, well, we went back in March of two thousand four, and then March of two thousand eight, however, then the elections changed, so the city had to go back in November of twenty-ten, and then every four years after that. So our current home rule was November of twenty-two, and it is in effect until June thirtieth of twenty-seven. So yes, of twenty-six, that's when home rule, we would have to go back, if this is not approved, we would have to go back out for home rule in twenty-six. So moving on to the permanent base adjustment, as mentioned before, we would be adjusting that top amount, the seventy-nine, eighty revenue collections, and, and so we would adjust that base to come up to a new expenditure limit. So what this calculation shows is our actual expenditure limit using the state. So what would be adjusted is that second column from the left, so where it says base, that fifty-four million, that is the amount we are looking to adjust up, increasing it to by a hundred and forty-eight million, so the new base would be two hundred and two million dollars. So what that looks like is, on this graph, the solid, the thicker red line would be our new expenditure limit. So it would be up above the, in our green, that green dash line is what we are estimating to be our expenditures for the next thirty-five years. So in thirty years, this is where we're estimating we would come across, cross that boundary of that new limit. But it could, it could switch, it could go, if the estimate, as I mentioned, it's only an estimate, it could be shorter, it could be longer, so this could last thirty-five, forty, forty-five years, depending on how those expenditures, the actual expenditures come in. To give you a reference, that thin red line down at the bottom, that is our actual current expenditure limit calculation. So that's how much we are above that. So adjusting that to a hundred and forty-eight estimates us that we would be above our expenditure limit for, or under our expenditure limit, sorry, for estimated thirty years. But it could change depending on how actuals come in.
But again, permanent base, it doesn't allow us to spend more money, we can only spend the money we receive. If we don't have permanent base, and we're just doing home rule every four years, essentially it would just be tracking the green line, I guess. Because then it, it's just an alternative that says, okay, well, we're gonna give an exception for four years to allow the city to spend above the seventy-nine, eighty for what it needs. Because this red line looks a little like above and beyond, above everything else, it doesn't give us more capacity to spend money. It just tells us that we can manage this with the growth that we anticipate into the future. The date that's most important is the one out thirty years, that, that's what allows us that capacity. I just want to make sure, because I can hear people thinking that somehow we're gonna go into more deficit, we're gonna be able to spend more money we don't have, that's not true. It's still a balanced budget, council makes those decisions, this is not some kind of debt instrument, it's not creating more debt for the city. It's just helping us overcome a archaic limitation that was put in by the legislature in seventy-nine, eighty. And it wouldn't really be any different if we did home rule, we would still be spending the money we needed, you know, it's just that we, we avoid the, every four years having to do an election.
So we make, oh, I'm sorry, Brian, you're still in your presentation, aren't you?
Oh, no, it's-
Go ahead.
It's okay, Mayor. So as the city attorney mentioned, that here's a, here's the tagline that the, the voters would see on the ballot, so the question would be, as allowed by the Arizona Constitution, shall the city Mesa permanently adjust the seventy-nine, eighty expenditure base limit by a hundred and forty-eight million, which will not increase taxes, and which is estimated to provide an annual expenditure capacity for thirty years? And then there's the yes and no. So a yes would effectively give the city, adjust the city's expenditure limit by a hundred and forty-eight, and this is not a tax increase, and a no, it would affect, would retain our existing expenditure base back to seventy-nine, eighty, however, we are, the city is still on home rule, so that would be into effect for the next two years.
But we can say, and this seems to resonate as we try to educate individuals about permanent base, let me make sure Brian and Jim are comfortable with this, we can say, even today, we have not adjusted the base since seventy-nine, eighty. Yes, the al, the home rule has given us alternatives to that, but the base has remained the same for the last forty-five-
Forty-five years?
Forty-five years. And when they hear that, they go, so your limitation on what you can spend has remained the same for forty-five years, and now we're asking is, let's make an adjustment to that and give us a future op, you know, future capacity for the next thirty years. That seems people, I think that's the simpler way of explaining it, we have not increased our limitation for forty-five years, we need to make that change, and we're asking to give it some capacity which we believe will allow us for thirty years.
I think the most compelling example of why that's necessary is the, the public safety sales tax, right? I mean, we, we, we need, because of the growth, we need more facilities, we need more employees in that area, and then, then we had per capita in nineteen-seventy-nine, and I think people, you know, embrace that.
Well, even just when, when you made the comment the other day about that you remembered when the city had, what did you say?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand people, I went and Googled to see what the, what year that might have been when the population was up.
What year was it?
Well, it was like thirty thousand in nineteen-eighty or something, like, anyway, maybe I'm, I'm off on that, maybe it was, anyways, it was maybe nineteen-seventy, it was, I don't know.
Yeah, probably.
I was just shocked, I was born in the seventies, and, and to just realize the, I mean, I think even if we make a point of saying, what was the population of Mesa in seventy-nine and eighty, right?
We can look that up, yeah.
Because it's obvious that our city's grown, but when you realize, like, when you said, that like blew my mind, like, how could you have been alive when the city was that small? And so I- You know what I mean? Well, he did just say-
I'll have to ask my parents.
Well, right, he did just say in thirty years he'd be a hundred, right? So, um, but I mean, that, that is, that to me is a bigger story, or a way to look at it than just that it's been that many years, but like, look at what our city-
What was, what was the city was like then? Yeah, sure.
Right, so-
You can pull some of that, too.
Yeah, just to like show the difference so that it's really, really obvious.
Population, the size of the city.
We can't be doing the same thing that we were doing back then. Sorry.
For some reason, I feel older right now.
You've aged, Brian, the last-
So I wanted to clarify my question on the constitutional spending limit, I, I was putting two together, so there are constitutional spending limits based on our general obligation bonds, is what, from what I understand, right? I mean, we have, based on our assets and appraisal or everything that we have.
Oh, yeah.
Those are different.
That's a different issue.
I know, that's, that's why I-
That's a Mike Pennington.
I threw that in there because-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I was mixing the two together, and I want to clarify that this is a total separate discussion versus a constitutional spending limit versus a permanent base adjustment.
Correct.
And so I, yeah, the, the home rule, we can do every year, or every four years, and been through that. My question is, what was the percentage of passing home rule every time we've had it in the last four years? What was the last vote percentage-wise? Do we know?
Mayor-
And the appetite of the, you know, voting public, I think that'd be important for us in our conversations, it passed pretty handedly, our, our home rule.
I believe Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, and City Clerk Mosley can correct me, but I think we've been in the sixties percent passing for the home rule.
That sounds right.
Yes.
I knew, I think it was in the high sixties.
I think, yeah, to the point, because the mayor and I have had this conversation about permanent base for several times since he's been here, and I've always like, oh, I'm not sure, but I think the point is, listen, home rule passes, and it's strongly passed, so let's try this.
Yeah.
And I think when we say, listen, it's the same base from seventy-nine, eighty, people kind of resonate to that.
What will resonate to those that vote against it when it says this is not a tax increase?
Yes, we agree with, that's important.
That's where people go-
It's like the-
Well, it is a tax increase, you're, you're pulling the wool over my eyes, because they defeated the Mesa school bonds because of that, and other school bonds districts, so there's gonna be that base out there that's gonna say, and fight against this, so I'm just laying it out there because I-
Sure.
I support this because I feel it's very necessary that we, we get a permanent base adjustment and, versus the home rule, but if it fails, then we have the home rule for another two years, and then we have to bring it to vote again.
Explain it again.
So I, I like the language as well, but Mr. Smith, we're not guaranteed we're gonna get that language, there's some discretion at the, at the county as to what actually goes on the ballot?
So Mayor and Council, so the, the tag, the question itself, I think we have a high likelihood of getting, because it's under fifty words right now, they could require us to cut a few words out, I mean, I think we're gonna get that exact language, though. The, the phrasing after the yes and no, that's, that's within the discretion of the county and space, and so we'll talk to them, we're hopeful that we'll get it. We will, we'll also emphasize, especially on the permanent base adjustment, we think that additional language is particularly helpful for this question. So of any of the, if, between this and the general plan, if we're allowed to have it on one, we would ask for it to be on this one, if there's space. And so, so that phrasing right after the yes and no, currently also, and you'll see this on the June third council meeting, when we do the general call, this is gonna be question one, unless council members tell us otherwise, so it'll be, this will be question one, then we'll have the two bond questions, and then the question, question four will be the general plan, just so that you also can have context for that.
Sixty-four percent, two thousand twenty-two.
That's a very high number. All right. Counsel, I'm, I'm sorry, Brian.
Oh, seventy-six? Seventy-six?
Seventy-six.
Never mind, flash across, seventy-six, wow. So there are people who will try to take this on this, but I think what, it really does resonate well with our general voters, and so I think, like we said, this is the time to do it, right? We're in between, it's a good point, it's a good time to do it.
Seventy-six percent is what I'm-
Is that what I'm hearing, is that?
Seventy-six percent voted yes.
Wow.
One other thing, Mayor, if I could, is on the tax increase, is that we, we thought it was important to educate people to say that this is not a tax increase, you actually see that phrasing also on the general plan question, we actually have public members who thought the general plan was somehow a tax increase, and we're actually not the And we're actually not the only city that has had that issue. In fact, another city actually included in their ballot language on their general plan that it's not a tax increase. And so, yeah, there is obviously some misinformation that's out there, and so we are trying to get the correct information out to the, to the public so that they can make an educated decision.
Jeff was telling that was some of the things he heard at the, the public meetings we did have, and it's not impacting their zoning either. So those were two key topics. Okay? So anyway, you'll see this on Monday.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Summers, Mr. Horeti, are you good with, with that?
Mayor, I'm good with that. I, I'd just ask if staff could provide us possibly with, say, a one-page infographic that hits the bullet points for both, both of these issues.
Yeah.
That we'd be able to share with, with our constituents.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Summers, we will, once council approves the items for the ballot, we will be creating the publicity pamphlet. We will provide the FAQs and the facts for all of the items will be on the ballot. We will do that for all of these items.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're, it's nine o'clock. We've got a couple other items on the agenda. Why don't we take a 10-minute break and come back at a quarter after, and we'll take up, start with Neon Gardens. All right, it's 9:15. Why don't we take our seats and get geared up again? Next item on our agenda is item 2B is a presentation and discussion on the Neon Gardens.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. We're going to.
Mayor.
Things up a little bit for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Horeti, were you saying something?
No, Mayor, this is Councilmember Summers. Just for the record, I'm still here, so we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Mr. Horeti, are you also with this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. We're going to lighten things up a little bit with some neon and talk a little bit about, yeah, see? I got you there, didn't I? So we're going to, we're going to talk a little bit about the Neon Garden this morning. And to my left, I have Zach Kosia. Zach is our project manager on the project, and he's been managing our visioning process, our design, and now he's getting ready to manage construction. So he's going to talk a little bit about the project.
Hey, thank you, Beth. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Excited to be here and give you the update on this project. So the, the first image that you see, this is context site map. So this shows the location. The Neon Garden is the back lot west side of the post. It's in between Eco Mesa and the post. Historically, it was used for the mail trucks, and it was a secured parking area specific to that use. We're going to repurpose it and turn it into an event space. We're going to, it's approximately 10,000 square feet, as you can see noted on the screen. Very much open programming was our whole focus on this. And as we get into the other images, you'll see that it's very programmable. That was one of the things we wanted to have. If somebody wanted to reserve the post, they could also reserve the Neon Garden and have the whole facility, or we could also split it and have two different activities or reservations going on at the same time. Big emphasis on restoring some of our historic neon signs, so that's exciting that we'll see here in a few of the images coming up. This is our conceptual site plan. I'll walk you through a few elements here. The first, I'll start with the utility side of it. In the bottom-left corner, you'll see three green squares. That's the City of Mesa Electric Utility Yard. That's existing. Our plan will be to decoratively screen that off and keep, you know, the public and users out of that area. The tilted rectangles are existing trash enclosures that relocated with the Eco Mesa that front out onto the alley. Next to that is a sliding gate, a vehicle gate, and that acts as one of the main entrances on the south side to the Neon Garden. This is still very much a functional loading dock area, so it's designed to have loading trucks come into the space, be able to three-point turn back up to the loading dock, unload events for things that are happening in, in the, in the space. The middle geometric shape, that's artificial turf. The, the concrete around it, the whole space is very much vehicle accessible. We did artificial turf for various reasons, climate action being one, but more importantly, to be able to have vehicle access and maneuverability. And we can have some food trucks, and we'll see that. Going up to the north side, along Pepper, you have two more main entrances. There are the bigger squares in the image, in the northeast corner and northwest corner, and those front out onto Pepper. So the whole site's secured between gates and walls, but we can also open up these three specific areas and make it very much open and inviting for pedestrian traffic. Next slide. This is a view looking at some of the neon signs, and we have some more detailed images coming up, so I'll just give a highlight. Right now, we're looking at repurposing and restoring four of our existing signs. It's the Ford sign, the Bill Johnson's, the Dairy Queen, and the Watson Flower sign. You also see a playoff of the Diving Ladies. That's a new neon sign that we're proposing to have in that location as well. This is a view from Pepper. The one thing I wanted to note here is we're actually installing a new sidewalk along Pepper. We're adjusting the curb height to make it a little more pedestrian-friendly. It's a pretty substantial drop today, so we're going to fix that.
And you can let her get over it.
I've seen people open car doors and get them stuck on the sidewalk, so we're going to address that. One of the things I wanted to note is the entryway, the gates and the things you see are set back in just a little bit, so we have a little bit more room and space for some pedestrian gathering out on, along Pepper. All right, next. This is a view of what it might look like. We're looking to the southeast at this point, back towards the post, and we have some food trucks in here. These are all to scale, just for frame of reference. Right now, we are easily sized to have at least four to five food trucks comfortably. That comes in all shapes and sizes, so there's all kinds of opportunities if you have smaller type vehicles or trailers or a farmer's market, some event space. So very much flexible and programmable. Well, also, here's another view of that same type of use, looking to the northwest. I think this is a good view that highlights the relationship between the Neon Garden and Eco Mesa. One of the benefits that we have is we didn't really need to do too much with shade on the west side, because that building shades the Neon Garden mostly afternoon, so that can be an advantage in the, in the hotter months. This is a great shot. This is our only really night image, the conceptual image that we have. I love this view because it really highlights some of the neat things that could happen in the Neon Garden at night. You know, we, behind, from this viewport, behind us is all the neon, and we're going to program that to where depending on the event, they can turn it on or turn it off. All the area lights will be dimmable as well, so very much flexible in the programming. A great place to make some, some memories. I do want to mention the stage that you see, that's all new. That's being built off the existing loading dock, and there'll be that overhead trellis system that has the audiovisual light system for, for events like concerts and lecture series and things of that nature. So now we'll go a little bit deeper dive into the actual neon signs. These are some of the images of the signs we're proposing to repurpose there when they were in operation. So this is the Watson sign. This was located along Main Street on the Tempe Mesa border. So this is our far west-reaching sign along Main Street. The next sign is the Dairy Queen sign, and this was east, south, it'd be southeast of Pioneer Park there on Main Street. Something to note on this is the blue sign. This dates back to about the 50s, and this will be the only sign. Of all the signs you see on this image, this is the only sign that we're repurposing there. Corporate Dairy Queen came years later and made them install the other signs. We do have those as well, but we're only focusing on the blue ice cream sign at this point. Bill Johnson's, I think everybody is aware where Bill Johnson's at, very much beloved neon sign, very iconic and unique. This is one that'll go in the center of the back west lot. These signs, these pictures don't do it justice because they were in the air, meant for vehicles, so they're really large, and they will fill up that western space and be a really neat thing. We have some images coming up. This is actually the Ford sign, this is in our sign yard. This is down at 200 South Center. If you haven't been by to check it out, I invite you to go. It's in a fenced-off area, pretty neat to walk through and see a lot of its history. But this shows this Ford sign was restored. This was the Smiley Ford, their original sign. This was restored at one point in time, and they decided not to put it up, so they just put it in the garage. So it's been pretty much in, in good condition. This is a very easy one to repurpose. We'll have to repair some of the neon, and then that one will be able to go up without much effort. And then the last, well, sorry, this, this slide talks about the budget and where we're at. So we've broken the effort into two different JLC contracts and focuses. The one is refurbishing the signs down at 200 South Center, and we're working with Valley Rain as our contractor, Graham's Neon here on Country Club, and Sierra Signs. So we're going through that effort to, to redesign the signs. We're really dialing in. We're working with the Mesa Preservation Foundation as well, with VIC, understanding how much of the original sign we can keep and that's structurally sound, that'll, that'll last the time. So it's not like we can rebuild this 100%. It's not a complete restoration. We're trying to figure out how much of that we can bring in to tell that story that this much of the sign was the original sign. We're also working on some interpretive signage with the Mesa Preservation Foundation, so you'll be able to walk up to these neon signs and have the history, where it was, when the city obtained it. We're looking at maybe a QR code that you can then go to a bigger story on the neon. So that's the first number. That's total project cost. That's design, construction, installation at 1.2 million. The Neon Garden site work, that's what you see more in the image on the right, that's 3.8 million for a combined total of 5.1 million. And we are working with city management for a budget increase to the money we have set aside of an additional 1.8 million to, to make that 5.1 million number. Now, the question that's on everyone's, everyone's mind, including my own, is the schedule. So we are actively working through finalizing design, going through permitting, working with the contractor. We're hoping to start construction onsite in June, and our substantial completion we're looking towards is the end of this year in December. And with that, we, I'm, we're open to any questions you might have.
That's quite a bit of cost for $5 million. What, what was our budget before? I just think of what it was costing before all this, and is this one-time monies, Chris, or is this a bond? I mean, this is.
This is just the construction cost, yeah.
Okay. Well, how we're going to fund the project.
Right, it's just like all these projects that we've had. I mean, there hasn't been a project I've brought to yet that hasn't been over budget, so.
It's a market.
It's just, it seems to be a trend. We're, we're, we've struggled, we've valued, we've taken a lot of stuff out of this project. The last meeting we had, we significantly reduced a lot of, there's some things here you're seeing that we will not be seeing in the final project. The trellis hangover, hanging over there on the back. So we will, one of the things we're exploring is that there is the Serine House project, which we've brought to council before, has, we've only identified the ability to phase one of that, and we allocated some funds to that. What's been requested by Councilmember Duff is to consider that project to be put in, to consider, that you'll see on Monday, into the proposed bond election, and that would then, the idea is then to allow that one to be fully funded, to do all phases at one time instead of doing it piecemeal over multiple years. And so what, the thought is then we could take those funds that were already allocated from General Capital and, and cover the, cover the difference here, because if we put that project in the, in the bond program, then we'll fully fund it that way. So that's kind of where we're leaning toward right now.
Have we got any participation from the public sector, public, I mean, private sector, like any, can we get any monies from them? Grant funding or?
We've, I don't know if, you know, even all these signs, the city purchased all these signs for the, you know, on behalf of the preservation side. They didn't have the funds to even.
Right.
You know, remove them and store them, and we were in, or purchase them. We actually purchased, no, I don't think we purchased, did we purchase Johnson's? I know we ended up purchasing Dairy Queen and some of these others, but I can't remember, Jeff, is that right? Which one is Jeff?
Jerry Queen and Ford.
Jerry Queen and Ford, so we've already been, yeah, we, we haven't seen any of that. Again, this is the, this is really phase two of the post, right? We, we were hoping to do all this, frankly, when we did the post, and that became a option where we said, well, we can't.
Afford it.
We can't afford it then, and so we just focused on completing the post and then came back with the Neon Garden. So I think there's a, there's a lot of interest in continuing to find opportunities to restore more of the neon signs. I don't know, what's the total inventory? How many different signs do we have? 18? So we're still looking for options to restore and find a home for those.
I guess that's all I have. I, I didn't, I didn't know the number was going to be that big, but.
That's pretty consistent with everything we've seen, whether it's libraries or evidence facilities or fire stations or anything we're doing these days.
And we're still seeing costs rise. You know, our market here in the valley for construction is being driven a lot by what's happening with chip manufacturing plants, battery plants. It really is taking up a lot of the skilled labor, electricians, plumbers, framers. So the cost of labor continues to go up here in our marketplace, so we're still seeing some cost increases in, it's every project. I'll tell you, every project we work on right now, we're struggling with keeping costs down.
So I have been so excited about this, and I've brought it up several times when I'm out talking to the public, and I am on the ID Museum Board. And so anyways, I'm over in that area a lot with ID Museum and, and the post. And so I, every time I walk past that empty lot or park in it, I just get excited thinking about what can be. But I will say, when I was looking through this presentation, my jaw dropped at the number because I just don't understand what these numbers mean and what is going into it. So I would really appreciate a breakdown of what we're actually paying for in that 3.8 million, because we just had this conversation, Mr. Brady, about why the post costs so much because we were dealing with asbestos and removing load-bearing walls and, and trying to restore something, right? And it would have been cheaper to knock it down and build something new, but that wasn't the point of it.
We're not going to knock it down.
No, I know. I'm saying why, why we spent $8 million or whatever on the post because there was so much that had to be done to be able to restore it. This is an empty lot, so I'm just really struggling. Like, when I just, just me visually look at this and I see a stage and pavement and grass, fake grass, and then landscaping and some little benches, and like, then you're saying you're not even going to see everything that's in this picture, like.
Well.
When I think of a house that you could build for $3.8 million, I, I'm just, I'm really struggling, really, really struggling with what in the world costs $3.8 million in this empty lot.
So first of all, 1.2 million is just the neon.
No, that's why I'm saying 3.8. I didn't say, the, the 5.1 is the total project, so the 1.2 is just the signs, but the 3.8 is the project.
Right, so you're not going to see all of that, correct me wrong, but all of that concrete you see on the back.
That goes away.
That goes away.
That's old, cracked.
That has, we have, in the demo, and remove that is significant. We have to bring out, you know, we did a lot of work with that backstage area, has to be, we have to extend that out a little bit more from where it is. And so all that gets replaced with pavers and artificial turf. And when we build things, I think what, sometimes I think a resident, you know, even when they build their home, they're not using commercial grade, you know, and look at, we showed you trucks, we showed you food trucks parking out here.
Right.
So it's going to have a different level of structural support. Now, we could build this so that you couldn't ever drive a food truck on there and just, you know, use it that. So it's things like that, right, that you don't see, but.
And that's my point. I'm, I'm assuming there's a lot I don't see.
Yeah.
Because what I, my, what I can see is not $3.8 million. So that's why I would love to see a breakdown of how much things cost.
Sure.
Because I, I cannot support this at this cost. I just can't.
So let us give you a little more information here. One thing you don't see is there's an AV audiovisual system. There's lighting. There's conduit that has to go. There's additional power that has to be brought in for the signs and all of that. And Zach can help me out, but the existing concrete goes away. And Zach can help me out, but the existing concrete goes away. We have to pour new concrete, use all the metal you see in the signs and the screening around the power boxes along the frontages. That's, that's, that costs something, so...
Yeah, thank you, Beth. So, I look at this, and it is a small space, but I would equate it to like the Swiss Army Knife of programmable spaces, because there is a ton of infrastructure going underground. 50 amp circuit breakers, there's audiovisual, we're doing security cameras, Wi-Fi, there's raised seat walls, and then our vertical walls. That back west wall, the image, the tough thing with concept plans is it doesn't always give you a true reference of scale. So, just for reference, the back wall where the Bill Johnson is, there's a block wall behind that that's eight feet, eight inches tall. On the other side of that's the parking garage. So, normally, we wouldn't fence off a public park space just in general, let alone that extra size of wall and the footings. The metal screening you see around the utility equipment, that's gonna top out at about 10 feet or so. So, it's really a lot of things happening in a very small space, and I can provide any sort of breakdown. We have a very detailed estimate from our contractor. We can definitely provide that.
If I could get that before we vote on it, that would make me feel better about this.
We can do that.
Thank you.
I'm very supportive of this project. I think, I was at an event Tuesday night at the post. It was packed. I was in an event a few hours later, Wednesday morning at the post. It was packed. There were people, the top topic of conversation at both of those meetings was, I love this space. I wanna use this space for my daughter's wedding reception. I wanna... When is the garden gonna be ready? These literally are the questions that crowds were talking about Tuesday night, Wednesday night. So, I think the post has been a big hit. I think this will be a big hit the second that it's available. It'll be programmed. The problem is gonna be scheduling it. And so...
Well, but it's next to public parking. That's the benefit, right? You got a parking garage next door.
I... My question has to do with the... I know we've got more neon signs than we have capacity to hang them. And there's the possibility, and I'm not gonna create a stir when I say this, but what if Buckhorn Bath becomes available?
It's not going to become available, Mayor.
Well, see, I knew there was gonna be a controversy. So, that's a debate, you know, that is going on. I wish well, you know, the Buckhorn Bath people on their historic preservation, but sometimes things happen. But if not Buckhorn Bath, then something else comes available. And maybe it's, we wanna add it to this. So, I think, I'd love for this to... Is there additional space if another sign becomes available that we could augment the signs at a later time?
Well, Mayor, we already have, like I said, we already have 18 or...
Yeah.
We have more signs than space.
We're already choosing to not put all of them out.
A lot.
And is that because we don't have the space for them?
I think the next question will have to come at some point with all the neon signs we have is, where else would you like? Trying to squeeze it more into this space...
Is that too much?
It may feel overwhelming.
Okay.
Aesthetically, you've gotta make it right.
Yeah. And so, I think the idea is, we need to be considering, where's the next... You know, we're gonna have another neon garden phase, you know, something. We need to think about where that... I think it'd be in a different location. I think that Watson Flower sign is massive, and that Bill Johnson sign is massive. So, I think when you, in the context of when you're standing in the space, it's gonna be pretty significant.
Yeah.
So, we agree with you. I think we just need to find an... It's not probably here. It's somewhere else.
There's not room to put a sign like in that other flower planter?
Mayor and Councilmember Spilsbury, so there are some potential opportunities. It depends on which sign and how large. But, yeah, along Pepper, there is some space, and we've actually entertained some conceptual plans of mounting things on the post, the exterior walls. But really, we've dialed in this.
We reduce those from a cost perspective, right? We had them wrapped all around the building, and so, we just kinda, at some point, we even, we've eliminated... There's a lot of things you're not seeing that we've had to eliminate from the project.
For reference, the Big Apple, the orange, that's a little over 20 feet. And so, that's why I encouraged, if you have the opportunity to go down to the sign yard and see it on a pedestrian scale, it's very large and will take up a lot of that space.
I look forward to standing there one day and saying, you know what? There's no way we need more neon signs here. This is, this is so lit that, you know, it would be too much to add another sign. That's, I'd love to have that reaction. That's a good problem to have, is having some cool signs and figuring out where to put them. So, I think that, yeah, the cost is shocking, as is all costs right now. But so, I, but I think the cost is gonna be forgotten very quickly once this is up. This is gonna be extremely popular. This isn't for voting, this is just giving you an update.
No, we're just giving you an update, but we will...
No, this is just an update.
All right.
I'll just add, you know, I believe in investing in Mesa, and this is one of our Mesa assets. And for me, iconically, having these signs go up so that they can be seen, to me, brings history back to our area, that we have in a storage yard somewhere and in others. But at the end of the day, I know the cost is high, but if we do it right, that's, well, resonate with our community members. People will say, why did you spend all this money for neon signs? Well, it's part of our history, and that's what we wanna have available to our area. The other question I had is, an outdoor stage facing to the west, music or whatever's going on to Eco Mesa? I don't know how that'll be. Who gets the complaints on that? Councilmember Duff?
Well, we've had this conversation with the developer from the very beginning. He was very much aware of what we're doing. That's why we've left the sign up right next to where people pull in and pull out of that parking garage. I made Zach put it up with the picture of the stage. We will be, we'll be good neighbors, right? We won't, but it'll be, we'll keep it. We've tried, we've considered that in all the design and be able to manage the lighting and the sound, but most of it'll probably be somewhat acoustic, but we'll have, we'll balance it out. But at the same time, it's, you live in, you live in a downtown. You live in a very active area. So, anyway. And Councilman Reddy has a question.
Yes, I saw Mr. Reddy's hand up.
I'll just add, I can see people standing on their balcony or sitting there enjoying the venue.
That's what we're hoping.
I think that's part of the sales pitch for the, for that particular place to live. Mr. Reddy?
I think my question was on the amount of signs, and maybe it just, you know, the scale of it. I know that some of the signs are really large, just wondering, I was just a little underwhelmed of the amount of signs, but I know they're big signs. Not sure if we have in the inventory smaller signs that lead up to kinda call into this piece as a neon garden, or a neon garden sign or something. Just trying to, I think this is, could be like a little destination place for people that wanna take selfies and wanna come to downtown, that adds to that aura of downtown, that it's, you know, cool hip, but it goes to the tradition that Mr. Freeman was mentioning, restoring that history. So, it's really, I think, a really interesting way to draw more people into the downtown, but I just was underwhelmed on the amount of signs based on what we have. Not sure if we have smaller sets of signs that make sense to kinda leading into it, that creates a more of attention, because they seem, it seems like it's gonna be inside that parking lot, and, you know, maybe somebody can miss it really quick unless it's lit up, of course, at night. But just a thought there of, how do we, how do we kinda create the attention even further of this area?
I would just say, I think that Watson Flower sign is massive, and it's just, frankly, when we get the color, it is, you're gonna see it from the street. It's a great point, but listen, there were more signs, and there are more signs. Not all of them are in condition for this purpose, but I think when we understand the scale, I think what we could also show you is maybe a phase two, where the areas that we didn't include signs, where we, you know, we could talk about that. But again, it's gonna be more money, but we can at least show you the other locations where we had, you know, considered that, and then we could, we could talk about that too. We were, again, we're trying to balance out. These are, I think Zach said at the beginning, these signs were built and up high, meant for auto, and while the number of signs is not overly impressive, I think when you look at the amount of square footage of a sign, these are significant, and we're bringing them down to the pedestrian level. But we will go back, because I know we had a few others on some of the buildings and stuff. One of the things we were trying to do, and it's a great point, Councilman Reddy, is we made the decision to keep them inside the secured area as opposed to being too far out, outside of the area, because we're just, again, we're concerned about the security of the signs too, and access to someone getting to them.
That's actually my question. I can't remember, is this, does this have hours? Is this open to the public at any time?
Well, the parks will, it'll be a park, essentially. The Parks Department runs it, so there'll be, there'll be certain hours, right? It won't be 24 hours, but there'll be, I'm sure that I, it'll probably be the same with the post, and I can't, we'll have to work. I can't remember what, Andrew, we talked about.
But on like a typical afternoon or evening, and someone's walking around downtown Mesa could walk in there?
I think this is gonna be programmed for events, and so, it'll either be a public event, or it'll be a private event.
Oh, so it won't be open? Because like, I loved his idea that people would go take selfies, but if it's not open, it's not open.
Right. Mayor, Council, the idea is when we have staff there, we can open it up. We see bus groups coming in, wanna have lunch there, and we're staffed, we can open it. But it wouldn't be unsupervised, open park area like we do in other areas. Otherwise, it'd be for events.
But she has staff that are office here.
Right.
So, okay, so then if there is an event with staff there, then the doors are open for the bathrooms to be used. But, but then it, all, it's either all open or all closed, essentially?
The restrooms wouldn't be available for public use if we have an event going on, though.
Oh, they aren't?
No.
Oh. I just don't know why I assumed people could use the bathrooms inside if they were at an event there. So, there wouldn't be bathrooms.
If they're at the event.
Isn't that, what did you just say?
I said if there's an event going on, it wouldn't be restrooms available for public use.
Oh, people at the event can use it. I was assuming that that was meant, public that were at that event.
Another reason why it was a little more expensive, because we had to design this so that you could have public access, that you could have an event on the backside and have an event on the post and still have access to the bathroom.
So, public access, meaning if you've paid for an event?
Or the person who, yeah, for the clients that are using this could have.
Like, if it's a food truck thing, public can walk off the street and come in to use the food truck, but they'd be able to use the bathroom.
The restrooms will be available.
Do you have any programming going on there? We have staff there, restrooms are open.
We, Mayor, Council, we actually changed the design of the post so we could isolate the restrooms, so that they could, you know, they can access the restrooms if they want to from the garden, but not necessarily go into the building.
So, you could have two things going on. So, again, when people try to compare pricing, we're thinking about all these other issues, and we're building separate walls and securing bathrooms and all those things, so... So, we will come back, at least to show you maybe other options of where, but we wanna move forward, we wanna get this going, and then we could talk about some of the other neons we looked at. But they're all, I say small, I don't, small's relative to a neon sign. There, there's a few smaller ones, I guess, we could talk about.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, when we say small, it's six feet wide by five feet tall. So, I mean, if you put that right here in this room, it's not a small sign, but in the world of neon, that is considered a small sign. And I just wanted to also focus on the actual neon glass tubing itself. That's one of the main reasons we wanna have this site be a little bit more secure than if it was on a pedestrian level out on the street. You know, usually, they're protected because they're up in the air. We definitely wanna have, we've set them back into this landscape, have a seat wall in front of it, and we've been able to secure the site when needed, just for after hours. We, you know, we're really concerned, it's a big investment to repurpose and restore these signs, so we wanted to have some security, extra measures in place.
But the designer has taken a lot of care to make the fencing and the security kinda very porous, so you can see into the facility, you can see the signs.
I just wanna add that I think it's good wisdom to do the Shrine House at the same time and wrap that into the bond.
Right. And do it all at once.
Yes, and do it, get it all done. I'm sure Jeff McVeigh would like to get that off his plate, and so...
Yeah, no, we, as talking with Councilmember Duff, and I don't, I'm careful not to speak for her too much, but in that conversation, she asked about the Shrine House, if we could put it in the bond package, and you'll see that on Monday, then we could just do it as all one phase. And then the idea is, well, then we could take those dollars that we've already allocated for a phase one of that and put it in, make up the difference here.
For phase two? Because this, if you're talking about doing this by the end of the year...
So, the idea is to take the money that was already allocated for the first phase of the Shrine House and move it into this project.
I see.
And then take, put the Shrine House in the bond package for its full cost, phase one through whatever, all, no phases, we just do it in one project. So, that's the plan.
Well, I think we're creating some really nostalgic walkability for our community, for our downtown area by doing the Shrine House and the neon sign, and I fully endorse that, because we need to have placemaking things that will happen in our community that draws people downtown. And I even brought up the fact of geocaching, you know, for a neon sign, is have that ability, because people would flock there, geocachers, they love that, and taking pictures and sending that on, so that'll just extend what we've done here. So, I'm comfortable with it, not comfortable with the dollar amount, but I get, I get it, but one-time monies, let's build it today.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I say amen to that. This will be one of the most beloved locations in our community once it's up. It's gonna be, we're gonna wear it out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next, item 2C, speaking of downtown and exciting things. Item 2C is a presentation on the services provided by the Downtown Mesa Association, DMA's accomplishments, and the proposed DMA work plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Good to have the DMA crew here with our city staff. Terry, I don't know, have you spoken in a council meeting before?
I was here once and offered public comment.
Okay.
But I've not been here for a formal presentation.
Well, to introduce you then, Terry is the new director of the Downtown Mesa Association. Not, I say new, by, has it been a year?
It's pretty new. It's been just four months.
Four months, okay.
Yes. It's very new.
Great. Well, we're excited that you're here. Thank you for coming to Mesa.
Well, thank you, thank you. And good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Like the mayor said, my name is Terry Medexa, and I am the new executive director for the Downtown Mesa Association. I'm really excited to be here today, not only to introduce myself, but to also showcase the impact of the DMA and the strong relationship that we have in place with our city partners. I stepped into the role of executive director in mid-January, but I'm not new to downtowns. I have spent more than 25 years championing downtowns. My passion is creating a vibrant and economically thriving place for people to live, work, learn, play, and invest. Since I haven't had the opportunity to meet with everybody individually just yet, I wanted to share a little bit about myself. I am moving to the Valley with my husband, and I have two kids. One just returned home yesterday from his first year in college, and then just after this meeting, I'm gonna fly back up, not literally fly, I'm gonna drive up the hill because my daughter is graduating high school. So, today is gonna be a great day. My family and I are foodies, so we really enjoy unique places to go. We love the locally-owned restaurants, shopping, and other experience. So, downtown Mesa is the perfect fit for us. Now, a little background on the DMA. Our organization serves approximately 300 property owners and close to 400 businesses. We are governed by a board of eight comprised of property owners, including a voting seat on our executive committee for Jeff McVeigh, who serves as the representative for the city, and our top partner. The organization's broad goals are to make downtown a premier destination, attract people and spending to downtown businesses, and increase property owner investment. Now, I'm gonna share some of the specific programs and efforts that help our team reach these broad goals. As an enhanced services district, the services provided by our clean team are fundamental to the organization's mission. They are visible, their work is measurable, resulting in significant support from property owners. You can see their impact on this slide. Another example, just last month, the clean team removed 2.3 tons of trash and debris. It's a lot. So, to frame this a different way, imagine downtown Mesa with the Neon Garden, with our new housing. Imagine what downtown Mesa would look like with graffiti encampments and 2.3 tons of trash littered in our public spaces and on our sidewalks. So, the clean team is doing, I think, a very visible, impactful, and a great job at maintaining our public spaces. We work closely with Mesa Police to ensure downtown is a safe environment as well. With the new downtown engagement team and other members of Mesa PD, our suppression, crime suppression efforts are focused on reducing nuisance behaviors, quick removal of encampments, and minimize vandalism. We also recently launched a new app. It's called the Band App, and this allows businesses to communicate with one another quickly by text, so you don't have to be sitting at your computer with an email. We have city staff that are on that app as well, so everybody can see right away if there's an issue, a security-related issue happening in downtown. The DMA continues to manage monthly employee parking permits, and we recently transitioned special event parking to in-house management. This allows us to deliver the service more efficiently. We have also enabled credit card payments, and we are accurately tracking and reporting financial data, and this is all resulting in added special event revenue that can go right back into downtown investment. Vital to our mission is reaching a broad and engaged audience. We have worked with Evolve PR to help secure media coverage for downtown events and other happenings, as well as new businesses and new development. And, you can go.
Yeah.
I just want to expand on this slide for a quick minute, and the role of social media. We're used to traditional media like newspaper headlines and radio coverage, but social media plays an integral role in reaching an even broader audience. For many, they receive all of their information on social media. As an example, on the top of this slide, where the face is blocked by the empanada, this is Keith Lee, who is a TikTok star. And I'm sort of speaking out of my wheelhouse, I'm a little too old to really understand the role and impact of TikTok, but he has 16 million viewers, and he made a visit to Downtown Mesa unbeknownst to anybody. He just came, went to Republica Empanada and did a food review, and his 16 million viewers noticed, and they came into Downtown Mesa and stood in line for days, so much so that Republica ran out of food for several days. And we went out, we noticed this, and we saw the uptick in Republica's own social media, their, their numbers increased thousands just by, by Keith's video. And so we went and we talked to people in line, and the majority of the people we spoke with were not from Downtown Mesa. They came into Downtown Mesa from other parts of the valley to experience Republica Empanada, and our, our guess is they will be back. And so the role of this one video from somebody not even from Mesa, not even from Arizona, was able to help sort of share, and this went viral, and now Republica is the beneficiary as well as downtown.
I think he did the same thing at Hope's Fried Bread, didn't he?
I think he did.
Because I was at Hope's a week ago, and she was like, you know, time is measured before and after this happens.
It's true.
Because it was such a earth-shaking event.
Well, and, you know, again, I'm, I'm, admittedly, I'm just too old to, to really understand it, but my kids both follow him. So when I said, you know, what's going on with this, we're, we're watching the effect of Keith Lee, and both my kids exclaimed, they follow him, they love him, they do exactly, like, they go to the places he suggests.
Yeah.
So, we were able to benefit from that as well. Yes, so now on to housing. There is also significant interest in housing developments. We've had great coverage for Eco Mesa, recently Melody on Main and Second Avenue Commons. The coverage showcases Downtown Mesa as a place people want to live, creating increased demand. So there's a lot of great stories that are taking place in downtown, and it's our job and our commitment to try to broadcast that and celebrate it. So the key to a vibrant downtown for all these residents that are now moving and people coming to eat, the key is filling our public spaces with events and activities and creating other incentives and promotions to encourage people to spend their time and their money in downtown. So the DMA continues to offer a gift card program to encourage spending in participating downtown businesses. We have more than 40 businesses participate, and more than $16,000 in gift card sales have been generated. We define that as a success, and we look forward to seeing that gift card program continue. One of our core services is offering promotional activities that directly connect downtown businesses to a broader audience, creating, again, additional spending opportunities. Shown are examples of promotional activities from the past year. In each case, spending was either required or rewarded. These activities benefit businesses directly through increased spending and benefit downtown with increased foot traffic and engagement. Now we're going to get into some DMA's signature events. One consideration as I go through this, especially as we talked about, when you look at budgets and you look at increased taxes, I think increased costs are affecting everyone. So DMA has found success in offering free and family-friendly events and activities. It's not our sole focus, but there is such a demand, and we are committed to offering those free, family-friendly events that bring people downtown, it's a niche for us. Our Easter extravaganza just happened last month. It is beloved by the Mesa community. We scattered about 16,000 eggs in the, the yard, along the green turf at the yard and along Main Street, and we offered free games, crafts and photos with the Easter Bunny, and the crowd responded. We had over 3,500 attend, many spending their time and money at downtown businesses during their visit. And I have not yet been here to experience Halloween, so these photos are from last year, but what I do know is that the businesses love this event, the community loves this event, so DMA loves this event. I was here, though, to experience the Mesa Music Festival, and I, you know, there, there are a variety of perspectives on this event, but there are a few things that are certain. Thousands of people come into Downtown Mesa over two days, and they go into businesses. Many businesses report this as a high-grossing weekend, and downtown captures significant media attention. This year, the DMA was more involved in the planning and execution of the event, especially as it relates to the city and businesses. We see that role only growing in the future. And I was not here for the barbecue classic, but like Halloween, we heard there was a lot of good attention, there was a lot of interest from not only Mesa, but the surrounding valley with this event, and so you will see something related to barbecue in the fall in Downtown Mesa. Our Sunset Markets have been an opportunity to connect with the community and to activate McDonald's once a month. Tonight is the last market of the season, if you're able, we would love to see you there. We're going to take the summer to review and create some strategies to increase engagement. I think, I think there's opportunities for us to make the market even better. I think we can have more vendors, we can have higher-quality vendors, we can promote better, we can bring more people into downtown on a Thursday. We just need a little bit of time to revisit and create some strategies to do that. And for Mary Main Street and the holiday season, we are already collaborating with the city's special events team to enhance Mary Main Street. Our efforts are focused on creating connections between the temple, the Mac, skating rink, the post and downtown businesses. We have all these great destinations for people, but we need to help create comfort and connection so people are walking to and from and not just stopping at one of those destinations. We're also looking at adding holiday decor, how we can creatively use lighting and music to make people think, well, what's a block down there? I hear something, or I see something, and it encourages them to walk another block. Increasing the number of free, family-friendly activities and adding a daytime New Year's Eve celebration with a diving lady. I'm not sure if it's a real diving lady or the neon diving lady, but this is, I think, a real opportunity for not only Downtown Mesa, but for Mesa within the valley. There is no daytime New Year's Eve celebration, and so I think we grab it, we make it our own, we claim it, we make it special, and we attract thousands and thousands of people to a 12 o'clock noon celebration. And the menorah lighting, we very much look forward to supporting that once again this year as details come together, DMA will be at the table to see what we can do to participate. The Yard Off Main. The Yard Off Main was brand-new this year, and our appreciation definitely goes to the Downtown Transformation Team that secured the SRP MIC grant. The goal is to think about and utilize public spaces differently and encourage the community to use that space. The DMA provided programming February through the end of April with activities like princess parties, dramatic storytime, live music, yoga, and we had our inaugural baseball block party, which will become an annual event. The DMA added bistro seating and large long games, so when there were not events in that space, the community could use it as passive space. After the street reopened, we issued a survey to capture feedback from the public and from our businesses. More than 600 responded, so I mean, that's a really good response rate, and the responses were overwhelmingly positive. Having said that, though, I think there were some lessons learned. We heard from businesses the importance of keeping the alley open, and plans are already in place to do just that by adding an additional roll of bollards. We also heard there is a need for shade and seating, and we have some ideas of what we can do if this does move forward and there's funding available. There are some great kiosks that we could put out there with some tables and chairs. And for people to stay and utilize the space, we need to make sure it's comfortable. So the public and business owners would like to see more programming, they want to see more events, more activities, and they want to see the space comfortable so people decide to linger, not loiter, but linger. So planned activities and passive. Thank you. Now moving to looking forward, our fiscal year is July of 2024, and we go through June 2025. We've been working closely with our board, with our businesses and our partners at the city to create a work plan where we think, where we can deliver something that's very measurable. So what we're starting with, though, is creating a framework internally for our staff and our organization to operate. We want to make sure that we have guiding principles, so we are always checking ourselves to make sure we are providing value. We realize that we're dealing with public funds, and we, we have to be mindful, we have to be intentional with our work. So we have to make sure we're providing value, we have to make sure we are able to measure the effect of our work, and that we can then report it to our stakeholders and our, and our city partners. What I do know in the four months I've been here, I can tell you what is working. Our clean team is doing a fantastic job. They are out, they are visible, our property owners really appreciate their work, they're very quick to respond. I do think there's room to make our clean team operate even more efficiently, we can tinker with their deployment, but they're out there power washing, you heard last month the 2.3 tons of trash and debris. It's measurable, it's impactful, they're visible, and, and they're providing good service. Special event parking, we brought that in-house. Immediately, we're already seeing, you know, by accepting credit cards, it's, it's easier for consumers. We take cash and card now. Our staff is managing it, so there is additional trust that's placed versus working with a contractor where there's uncertainty, there's full control from the DMA, and now there is some accurate reporting where there's confidence in the numbers that we're sharing with the city. So we think special event parking in-house is good, and we're able to expand because it's in-house if additional opportunities come online. We know that downtown is, there, it's, there's such a great vibe here, so we have a lot to celebrate. So we know what we're working with is, we have only good ahead of us. And so celebrating that, telling the story, getting more people to see what truly is going on in downtown, that is a great opportunity. We have great stock we're dealing with, and it's a great opportunity ahead for us. So priorities. What, what I've talked about mostly has been public-facing, but there's been a lot of work that's been done internally, so that first bullet point under administration has really been where I've spent most of my attention the past four months. We have led an, or I have led an overhaul of internal processes and procedures with the goal of transparency, accurate reporting and being strong stewards of public funds. Our organization has a fiduciary responsibility, I know that, and we now have internal controls that reflect that position. Marketing and business engagement, this is a new way for our team to look at what we're providing. I think marketing, we could be doing a lot more, especially when you look at social media and Keith Lee. We should be telling our story in a very engaging way on social media, and so we're working internally to make sure we have staff capacity in place to do that. Business engagement, I think, working with the Downtown Transformation Team, there are already some goals we've discussed together, such as a database where we have accurate information for all of our businesses. So the next time I come to you and I'm presenting on businesses in downtown, I won't say approximately 300, I'll be able to say we have 375 businesses, this many law firms, this many restaurants, this many bars. We will have that information, we just need the time to go out and collect it. But DMA is committed to working with our partners and be real, be, be a strong partner in collecting that information. And I think with that, I will turn it over to Jimmy.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the professional services agreement that we have with DMA to manage SID 228, which is the special improvement district that is downtown. The first slide you see that kind of outlines the different levels of service, there's baseline services, which are funded through the public assessment, as well as a voluntary city self-assessment. That money goes to those baseline services, which is the Clean Suite program, some promotion and marketing, some other cleanup and business development services for like business outreach, things like that. And then there's the enhanced services portion, which there's a, through the professional service agreement, there's an amount of money that we pay to DMA in order to go above and beyond what those baseline services provide, and that's for the, the parking management and enforcement, it's for special event production, services of the plaza, it's, it's City Plaza here, as well as other banners and kiosk program and things like that. Next slide. With this, we see the breakdown of how DMA gets their budget, the money for their budget. There's basically three parts. As I mentioned, there's the public assessment, and then the city's voluntary self-assessment, and then that other amount as well. The, the enhanced services amount, we did increase $50,000 for this upcoming year for the new contract. We looked back, and it's probably been about 10 years since they've had any kind of increase to that, and in the meantime, prices for supplies, equipment, as well as wages, has gone up significantly, so we wanted to try to bring that more into alignment. Next slide. And it looks like we're actually missing a slide.
We're missing a slide.
But I can tell you what's on there. So DMA's full, full budget for the year is $1 million, $1,056,313. With that, we have also, as part of the special, as part of the agreement, the professional services agreement, there's special event parking revenue that DMA collects when they, they manage the garages for the special events. As part of that agreement, they can request through the city manager's office to utilize some of that funds. They collect it, they put it in a separate account that can only be touched with that request. They've requested $50,000 additional for this next year just to put towards parking enforcement, so they can get another parking enforcement officer out there, freeing up the, the other person that we have to go to court more and do those things. The, let's see, that's it for budget. There's one more thing I wanted to add. We did, as of yesterday, the end of day yesterday, we've received one letter of opposition to DMA. It was a formerly vacant parcel that is currently under construction to have a duplex put on it, so it will be two rental units on the property. But they had cited complaints about homeless that had affected the construction of their building, as well as a dumpster that's located out in the street from the apartments across, that there was some furniture out and things like that. DMA, when they checked, had not received any kind of outreach from the person to them for the services, but the person felt that the assessment district didn't do anything for them. So DMA will be reaching out to them, letting them know that they are there for when they have those problems and that they can help in that capacity. But as of now, that is the only opposition we have seen, so. And with that, any questions?
Yeah, Julie.
Thank you. Lots of work going into this. Do our downtown ambassadors have the same resources to give to the homeless people as our park rangers and our police officers?
Mayor, Councilmember, when you mention resources, are Mayor, council member, when you mention resources, are you referencing, like, connecting them to available services? Yes.
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 Okay, so like, there's, when I went out with the park rangers, they showed me like what they might hand someone or whatever. So I just wanted, wanted to find out what kind of information they're giving and support that they're giving to those people, since they are obviously dealing with a lot of them.
Yes, and a great question. We are in the process also of creating additional training opportunities for our clean team ambassadors. They just received de-escalation training from the Mesa Police Department. We will be scheduling time for them to talk with service providers as well. In the meantime, though, they do have printed resources that they're able to give out.
You mentioned, I mean, when is this on our agenda for reauthorization?
So, Mayor.
Not reauthorization.
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah, for the, just to approve the funding and...
The assessments.
That's on Monday's agenda. Okay.
So, and today, our goal was to give you an overview of what DMA has accomplished over the past year in anticipation of council's action on the assessments on Monday. It's also, the reason we mentioned the one letter of protest against the assessment is because that is part of the public response process. Now, one thing that we would note is that this is a property that was not assessed in the past. It has, it has been under construction and has become a multifamily property, which has made it subject to assessment that it hadn't had before. So this is our first opportunity, DMA's first opportunity to be able to have that interaction and let those folks know what services are available to them. So we will be addressing those concerns with them as far.
Well, and we'll see if someone shows up on Monday to pull it off and to complain, and that's, that's fine. I remember being upstairs, and the room was full of angry DMA folks complaining about the assessment back 20 years ago. So that's, that's healthy, you know, to have people come out and, you know, talk about their assessment. So, so we'll see what happens on Monday. But I think it's noteworthy that there's perhaps only one person complaining. That, given the, given our history, that's remarkable, frankly. I'll just keep talking, if you don't mind. Terry, welcome to Mesa. We support you. You are doing a great job, and we want to support DMA fiscally and politically, and, and we're excited that you're here. I think clearly we have the potential to see downtown become our...
I think you lost your quorum.
I think we did, yeah. We're not gonna be able to vote on anything.
We're not gonna be able to vote. We're gonna have to conclude the meeting.
We have to conclude the meeting. Okay. Well, I look forward to telling you nice things about you when we can have another meeting, maybe on Monday.
Mayor, thank you. Council member, thank you.
So we can't not just vote, we just had, we can't meet.
We can't meet.
Okay, so this meeting has effectively been terminated because we've lost a quorum. So we'll just note that, and we'll, we'll take up the rest of the agenda items when we can reconvene with the quorum.
Yeah, so this meeting essentially, I don't know.
The meeting stopped when we lost a quorum.
Can we try to get Frankie back on for five minutes, or?
You texted?
I just texted.
I don't see a staff person here. Well, the presentation happened, so I think legally we can't, we can't go forward. So we just, there's not a question, we just have to stop.
And this is on for Monday night.
Yeah.
We'll discuss it. We can have a big conversation on Monday night.
Okay, thank you. Well, the meeting has been adjourned.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for the presentation.
Cleared the room.
Thank you, Mayor.
Was it me?